On behalf of the President, for choosing Howard as the location for this event, I want to also express my appreciation to all of the guest speakers. Thank you for coming to Howard University and doing what Locke and Frederick Douglass and Houston and all of the great ones who helped to shape Howard University. So, thank you for continuing to build on that tradition. All of the Howard University staff members who support this event, thank you for stepping forward to make sure that our guests are taken care of and that they have what they need. Dr. Johnson and Ms. Dr. Gravely Curry and all of the people who have worked hard to make this event successful. As you know, the state of the black world, the state of black America is at a critical point, and we need to do what Ron Walters asked us to do, is to remain ever-present on behalf of our people, to make sure that we're leveraging on behalf of our people. And I'm just so appreciative that you're choosing Howard University as the place to do that. To people that have done so much right here at Howard University, Darrell Smith and Dr. Ronald Walters, who was my teacher, who was my dissertation advisor, and so I have this special emotional attachment to Dr. Walters. And to Pat, our darling sister, thank you for continuing to allow Ron to be a part of us with the establishment of the Ron Walters Center. We need your support for that. Give us a... It would be an opportunity for us to do what Ron would have us to do, and that is to make sure that academia and the community and the street are run on behalf of our people. We're pleased to have Dr. Elsie Scott, a sister, a student, also run to direct that center, so we know that we'll be in good hands. Howard calls the community through words. We call ourselves the Mecca, we call ourselves the capstone, we call ourselves the hilltop. We use the motto "justice and truth," but we must earn that. It cannot be just words, and we must earn that by being associated with this phenomenon that is going on here. And I say to you on behalf of the President that we are associated with it. This is the long walk that we are still continuing. We're trying to reconstitute our people to eliminate the dismemberment that is taking place. We're committing ourselves to enhance diaspora studies, we're committing ourselves to making sure that there's continued access on the part of our students, but your work will make that possible. We're committed to democratic pluralism based upon universal rights and substantive due process for our people. And so, we just appreciate all that you're doing to make our work easier. We want you to enjoy the experience, and again, thank you so much for choosing Howard University.
Thank you very much, Dr. Alvin Thornton. We want to at least acknowledge Brittany Fox Hall, who is the Howard University Student Body President. She was to be with us tonight, I'm sure. She would want to bring greetings on behalf of the Howard University Student Body, and we appreciate their support as well. Well, in order to frame this very important discussion, coming after the 2012 election, indeed, the Institute of the Black World 21st Century holds the State of the Black World Conference every four years after the election, precisely so we can assess the impact on black America and the Pan-African world. We have a commission, which we commissioned in 2008, and I won't steal the thunder of my board chair, but in order to talk about framing this conversation, I want to bring out the Board Chair of the Institute of the Black World 21st Century, a leading activist for many, many years out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Would you please welcome Richard Adams? We just called him Rick.
Good evening. It is a distinct pleasure to be here at this citadel of black academic achievement and excellence, and you all look real good. I think the best-looking people in the country have gathered here this evening. Welcome. As said, I chair, and it's a distinct honor, the Institute of the Black World 21st Century Board of Directors, and along with the Shirley Chisholm Presidential Accountability Commission, they are the sponsors of this evening's town hall. Let me tell you a little bit about the commission before I introduce the facilitator of the commission. The commission is a group of leading African-American scholars and activists charged with monitoring the executive branch and presidential administrations for progress on the black agenda and issues of importance to African-Americans as reflected in the policy recommendations of the leading civil and human rights and political organizations, such as the National Urban League, the NAACP, the Rainbow Push Coalition, the National Action Network, the Congressional Black Caucus. The members of the commission, the facilitator, Walter Fields, Dr. Julianne Malveaux, Dr. Michael Fontenroy, Professor Boyce Watkins, Attorney Nkichi Taifa, Dr. Mark Lamont Hill, Dr. Patricia Newton, Dr. M. Tangalisi Sanjika, and Dr. Duchess Harris are all members of the commission. And without any further ado, I want to bring forward Walter Fields, a dynamic brother who is the Executive Editor of NorthStarNews.com. Thank you.
As Rick mentioned, I am the facilitator of the Shirley Chisholm Presidential Accountability Commission, but in reality, I basically do what Ron Daniels tells me to do in that capacity, and I'm proud to do that. And I think we should all give Dr. Daniels a round of applause for all of the work that he has done and continues to do on behalf of our community. I stand before you as part of the 13% of the 47% of the 99% that believe that this nation has a moral obligation to pay the dividend it owes the people that built it. And I say that, I say that as the great-great-grandson of a Civil War veteran, the nephew of a Navy wave, and the son of a World War II veteran. So, I take that very seriously in terms of keeping our nation accountable to what they owe people of African descent. The Shirley Chisholm Presidential Accountability Commission was created because in the aftermath and the glow of the nation's first African-American president, many of us, particularly Dr. Ron Daniels, was very concerned that we don't live in a state of euphoria, that we critique this administration without it becoming a personal attack, that we critique without negative criticism, but we critique in a way that will uplift public policy, that will be beneficial to our community. Tonight, we're exploring the dynamics of the 2013 presidential election, an interesting election that continues to, you know, be discussed on the airwaves. We have a candidate who doesn't clearly understand why they lost, or that he lost. And contrary to popular belief, we are not a divided nation. On November 6, African-Americans, Hispanic-Americans, Asian-Americans, gay Americans, women and young people stood united for a progressive agenda. The outlier were black, excuse me, the outlier were white males, and so, we shouldn't fall prey to the notion that we're divided as a country. The new America spoke loudly on November 6, and it is our intention at the commission to find a way to not only be helpful to this administration, but to raise a critique that will help us govern from a framework of justice and equity. And our challenge now is to behave, move, and govern like a majority. So, tonight, we bring together a very distinguished panel of individuals, and I can't wait for the discussion because there are so many issues that we need to examine as we enter a second term of the Obama administration. And let me close by saying that the commission believes we have three primary imperatives. The first is an organizing and education imperative. We have to inform our community. It's the 21st century, and we cannot leave our community behind in terms of information and education. We have an imperative of analyses. We have to be able to bring our thinkers together, people gathered on this stage who have spent a lifetime looking at issues. We need this intellectual capital to work for us. And third, as I said, we have a mobilization imperative so that we govern like we are the majority that we are soon to be. So, I thank you for coming this evening. I thank Howard University for hosting us. I'm thrilled because my former mentor and professor, Dr. Alvin Thornton, is here, so I'm looking forward to this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Walter. Speaking of modern technology, I'm trying to catch up with us. I'm told that we are live streaming, and I'm supposed to say, "http://new.livestream.com/duewebstreaming." Okay, I hope I got that right. Now, if you're on Twitter and I'm not, use hashtag, use hashtag #SBWC3. Let me say that one more time. "http://new.livestream.com/due," as in "do web streaming." And for those who are on Twitter, use hashtag #SOBWC3. I survived. Now, for this extraordinary panel, and we at the Institute of the Black World 21st Century are delighted and honored that such distinguished people as activists and organizers, intellectuals, and all that they do, would actually take time out of their very busy schedules to come and be with us at their own expense. There are no corporate banners up here, I'm not knocking that, but, you know, they came at their own expense because they wanted to be here and they wanted to have this critical discussion right after the election. So, let me introduce this panel. Does she really need any introduction? The former editorial director of Essence magazine, Susan Taylor. National Mentoring Care, and she'll speak about that, I'm sure. That's her new advocacy, and she is getting more people across the country, to men or others, than anybody else I know. I like to turn on television and see this brother. He was with us in New Orleans a couple of years ago. He just blowing up. I see him with Soul Dad O'Brien, I see him on Huffington Post, he has his own show, and he's good people because he's committed to our people. Please welcome Dr. Mark Lamont Hill, host of our World Today with Black Enterprise. And she is a tough lady. She says what she means, she means what she says, and says what she means. And I'm telling you, Bennett College for Women, we all heard about Bennett College for Women. If you never heard of Bennett College for Women during her tenure, you heard about what? Bennett College for Women, because she was the outstanding president of Bennett College for Women. But when we talked about Ron Walters as our leading political economist, political scientist, there's no better political economist than our next guest, Dr. Julianne Malveaux. And coming out of the South, he loves him some New Orleans. Bad brother. One of the leading theoreticians and practitioners of community economic development, maybe not as well-known as some of the others, but I can tell you, it's a bad brother. He knows what he's doing. Many years on the battlefield, tremendous experience, humble, quiet, but he gets it done. He is taught at Dillard University in New Orleans, now at Southern University in Houston, Texas, but best known to me as the incredible work that he did as the project director emeritus of the African-American Leadership Project, Dr. Intangalisi Sanjika. And my homeboy, I helped raise him a little bit, just a little tiny. I remember he was like coming up through the NAACP, you know, he just growing and so forth. He's getting married in a couple of days, folks. He's getting married, he gonna jump the broom. Bad brother also. He's a commentator for BET, and of course, you hear him on the Tom Joyner Morning Show. One of our brightest and bests. Please welcome Jeff Johnson. He has the largest network of black professionals in the world, period. The largest network of black professionals in the world. Some of you best heard of him many, many years ago, when he wrote a book called Success Runs in Our Race. Then he came behind that with Race for Success. Then he came back with something called Click, and I tried to figure the Click thing out, and then I finally figured out that you really do, if you network, you gotta click with people. He's a bad brother too. And he's none other than the president and CEO of FrasierNet. Please welcome George Frasier. If you haven't been to Selma, Alabama, you need to go. They're trying to erect the statue of Nathan Bedford Forrest. You know, they talk about the New South, but the New South is still the Old South. The more things change, the more they stay the same. And it's great to go to Selma every year for our commemorations, but once we leave the commemorations, and by the way, this family, this woman and her family, her husband, Senator Hank Sanders, they have kept the bridge crossing Jubilee commemorating Bloody Somde alive, their own resources, their own guts and sinew to make it work. No one, no more prouder than to have this bad sister on the panel, Attorney Fire Rose Aura Rose Sanders from Selma, Alabama, founder of the National Body Rights Museum. And when you're talking about taking liberation theology, right, and translating liberation theology into something practical that people could see and touch, then you gotta go to this church in Washington, DC. But it's not just Washington, DC. I mean, he has collaborated with Cain Hope Felder and talking about the African presence in the Bible. He was the national chair and coordinator of the Millions More Movement. He was dubbed in that position because we got some bad people on this panel. They're serious in terms of the work that they do. And it's nothing like going into Union Temple Baptist Church and seeing that magnificent figure of the Black Messiah on the wall. And that's because we have a Black Messiah right here in Washington, DC, the Reverend Dr. Willie Wilson. I don't think I missed anybody, so let's get this conversation going. Now, to introduce the moderator, my dear friend, someone who's no stranger certainly here to Washington, DC. I remember when he was taking over buildings, maybe he don't want people to know that, but you know, he got a little radical streak in UDC, leading students, and he had the Yemoja Party down here. That's right, we gonna expose all of that history. But he does bring it to the airwaves, and he talks about Making It Plain all the time on Sirius XM 127. And I'm honored that occasionally he allows me to come on and substitute for him out of the bullpen, you know, I come in and pitch for him every now and then. And he is none other than the host of, again, Making It Plain, Sirius XM 127. Please give a big round of applause for our moderator for this evening, Mark Thompson.
First of all, let's also give a round of applause to a man as we celebrate the 20th anniversary of his run for president in 1992, Dr. Ron Daniels. Give him a round of applause as well. And also, we want to lift Bev Smith up in our prayers. She's just a teeny bit under the weather, and she's not able to be here with us tonight. She was to have been my co-moderator tonight, and she sends her regrets. So, please remember Bev in your thoughts and prayers. She'll be just fine with God's help. Good evening to you all, and good evening to the panelists. We've heard all the introductions, and so, I think it's appropriate that we get right into it. And if the panelists don't mind, I think we'll exercise the two to three-minute rule. We'll probably be somewhat lenient, but right in there. And I think in keeping with the theme of tonight, and this being the first national conversation since the election, the first question I put out there for discussion for each of the panelists to respond to, I'm sure each of you will want to, and starting, going from left to right. Now that the president has been re-elected to a second term with a solid 93% of the black vote, what demands, if any, should black people make on his administration in the next four years to address the state of emergency in black America? What demands, if any? We'll go left to right. M. Tangalisi, we'll get started with you, please.
Well, first, let me express my profound appreciation and gratitude to Ron and the Institute of the Black World for inviting me to be here. Let me say that I'm a little bit off-centered about some of this because I'm about to turn 70 in a few days, 3/10, catching up with Ron. Let me start by saying this. First of all, we must contextualize that this president won as a result of the efforts of many different constituencies, but the most consistent constituency that he won with was the black vote. 93% of the black vote went to this president. And one asks the question, does this president owe us anything as a result of that? Well, did John Kennedy owe us anything? Did Lyndon Johnson owe us anything? Did Jimmy Carter owe us anything? Did Bill Clinton owe us anything? Did Barack Obama owe us anything? The unequivocal answer is yes. Every time we vote for any politician, there is something they owe to us. But our problem sometimes is we get confused about what is it exactly they owe us. We've got scholars debating activists, activists debating scholars, and we are no clearer because of that debate. The conditions of African-Americans have worsened, not gotten any better. Nothing has fundamentally changed between four years ago and today, Mark. The conditions of our people are still the same, especially the least among us. And what's most disconcerting, while I appreciate all the analysis that has been done, is we used to talk about low-income people, marginal people, poor people, and poverty. That debate has evaporated. It's now the middle class. And I appreciate the middle class because they're not the 1%, but what has happened to most of our people who have never been in the middle class? So, my concern is that we return to sanity by asking ourselves, has our conditions significantly changed? If it has not changed, the agenda has not changed. Now, maybe priorities can vary, but fundamentally, we still need jobs, we still need wealth improvement, we still need ownership, we still need good schools, we need healthcare, we need infrastructure, housing, and everything else that makes for a good quality of life. The question is, can you get that out of an elected official or not? Without a social movement, we get nothing. We need a social movement to continue to advocate in our best interest and pressure this administration as every other. As much as we love them, there are things we need that we need to make sure we fight for and stop this debate about whether we have an agenda and whether activists should fight with scholars and scholars fight with activists.
Thank you, M. Tangalisi. Jeff Johnson.
I am going to do the best I can while on this panel not to be redundant, and so, I agree.
Thank you, brother.
That's it? All right.
I think that to build on what was said, I think that there is a need for institutional infrastructure and focus to be able to carry the agenda. I think that there are multiple agendas, there are multiple issues, and when you start talking about what should black folks be asking for, it depends which black folks you're talking about. And I think that we have got to be a little bit more sophisticated about the fact that there are some black folks that just don't want what I want. And it doesn't mean that I have to hate them for wanting something different. It means that I have to be concerned with what is the pragmatic agenda that I want to carry forward. And so, if we're talking about the working poor and building a bridge from being part of the working poor to somewhere closer to middle class, there are some key things that have to be dealt with, whether it's housing and education or the plethora of other issues. The issues themselves, I think, are less the question. The policy recommendations themselves are less the question. I'm concerned with where is the galvanizing force that has to be in place to be able to move that forward? And then, what is the consequence for not responding? Because as I close, the Congressional Black Caucus has pushed this president, not to the degree that I think some people would like to, but in certain areas. There have been organizations that have pushed this president and challenged this president, not to the degree that I think some of us would have liked, but in some areas. But the biggest problem is, when this administration says no, or when this administration fails to listen, there's no consequence for not listening. There's no consequence for not responding. And we have got to get to the point, whether it's an aggressive response or whether it's a diplomatic response, what is our response to this administration going to be when we get to a place where no longer can we tiptoe and say that in public, we don't want to effectively address this president because we don't want to make him look bad as it relates to the black family? And I think that is one of the challenging things that we're going to have to deal with in the second term, because I don't think there's an issue of whether or not many of us support this president. It's how do we effectively challenge and hold accountable this administration for what we want and for what we think they are and are not doing?
I agree.
That wasn't redundant, was it?
No, indeed. I want to make sure. Fire Rose, Terre.
I have a long, long list, but on the realistic side, the first thing I would like for him to do is change his language. We hear talk about Wall Street and Main Street. I want him to talk about Backstreet. Just the language, if he would just change some of the language that he uses. Instead of talking about the achievement gap, I would like for him to talk about the preparation gap caused by systematic discrimination against black children 100 and some years after the Plessa decision. I would also like for him to address some concrete issues in the community. What bothered me most during his run for president, I never heard any talk about the serious problem we have with drugs in our community. Michelle Alexandra Royle, terrific book on the new Jim Crow. I would like for him to lift up that conversation in his own vernacular so that the thousands of young black men that are in jail and a growing increased number of black women, that he has to address that issue, and I think that's something he could do. Even though it's on my wish list, I would like for him to push for education to be a constitutional right. We have no constitutional right to education. And the South is becoming so, well, that's not true. They have always been clever. One law that has never been repealed is the law of circumvention. In the state of Alabama, this past election, I've never professed to be a Democrat, but I long for one Democrat to be elected. Not one single Democrat was elected in the state of Alabama. In the state government of Alabama, there's not one single white Democrat elected at the state level. The attack on voting is ferocious. As we speak, the Supreme Court will be deciding whether or not to repeal the Voting Rights Act. I think the president has to talk about voter suppression, and you noticed, he stayed away from that conversation. Now is the time to at least to lift the rhetoric that will show to the world that he is concerned about Backstreet and the fact that we have yet to achieve freedom and justice and equality in this country.
All right, Fire Rose, Terre. Reverend Willie Wilson.
Yes, let me just say, thank for the Ron and all those who were responsible for organizing this tonight. What I would do is try to flip that question around by asking first, what would we demand of ourselves? I think that when we consider who we are and what we've been through, we've proven ourselves to be smart, educating ourselves, even when it was illegal to be educated. We've proven ourselves to be strong, having overcome one of the most wicked perpetrations of unfairness and unrighteousness and inequality in the history of this planet. We've proven ourselves to be creative, and so then, why are we at the top of every negative stat in this country, the masses of our people, and at the bottom of every good stat? It's because in spite of our creativity, in spite of our strength in the past, in spite of our intelligence and wisdom, we have not been able to come together as a collective. If you would look at what happened the day after the election, here were those of the Hispanic community out at the White House raising their voices in regards to they having supported the president and demanding that there be new immigration legislation. Until we come together, and of course, all of us know, we are an enigma unto ourselves. The question is always, why can't we do this and why can't we do that? It's because we have not addressed even to this day the results of 400-plus years of brainwashing and mentalities that we still act out in terms of the behaviors that we exhibit. So, that we must first demand of ourselves and find a way to work through, and that's a arduous task and one which we have to face and challenge ourselves with. And then, as a collective, we can demand a whole lot of things. I think it's already been said that there are so many issues that we could talk about in terms of what we need to demand, but until we come together as a collective, rather than being splintered groups here and there and one voice and this and another that, I don't think our efforts will be effective.
Reverend Willie Wilson, thank you. And to the other side of our panel, left to right, again, just to repeat the question, what, if any, things should we demand of this second-term administration in light of the state of emergency in black America? Susan Taylor.
I so want to echo what you said, Reverend, that rather than looking outward, I'm really looking inward, and I'm doing that as an individual, and I think we all need to. We've not healed. We've not healed from the 400 years of disregard, disrespect, being taught to hate ourselves, hate our color, our hair, our lips, our hips, everything that represents our motherland. hate our color, our hair, our lips, our hips, everything that represents our motherland. We've been taught to hate, and there's never been that healing that has to take place. So in all the places where we need to be strong, in many ways, we are still broken. And I think until we really do address that, and that there's a whole process that we can engage in around that so that we learn how to love ourselves, we see reflected, you know, in just how broken we are, what's happening in our community and what's happening in our, even our personal relationships. I think about the activism that takes place in your church. And I think about what happens in most of our sanctuaries throughout this nation, on worship Saturday or Sunday or Wednesday night service or whenever we go. We are in those sanctuaries and we are gussied up. Most of us have moved out of the neighborhoods, but we go right back into the neighborhood to go to church. And we sit in those sanctuaries and we're praising God, and he's a mighty God, and the minister is preaching and the choir is singing, and we're having a good old time. And we're raising $20,000, $25,000 for Pastor's 25th anniversary. And when they work hard, they deserve that. But the children around the corner in the schools don't have books. And we don't have a plan to ensure that they have books. And while we're singing and praising God, outside the sanctuary doors, our children are dying. And so what my real... And it's not even a frustration, because what I'm trying to do is let us meet our people where we are. The essential thing is we don't have a plan. There is no forward movement. There's no building of an institution essence. There's no building of the institution we sit in, right now Howard University. There's no building of the National Cares Mentoring Movement. What I founded as Essence Cares and is now the National Cares Mentoring Movement without a plan. And so I'd say, what's the plan? We have to articulate one. And it doesn't, and it cannot be a 17-point plan. It has to be something so very simple, like, can I do... How many more seconds do I have?
Take a few more.
Okay, a few more. When we launched Essence Cares, the first group I went to was the National... I shouldn't even mention the name of the organization, but one of the Baptist conventions. All of the leaders came to the Essence Music Festival. They said they would stand together. You know what I learned? That the presidents of those conventions had never even had a meeting in the history. If you look at the Panhellenic groups, we are, I mean, fraternities and sororities, that's where a lot of our strengths lie. The Panhellenic Conference has never done one thing together. And so I'm not looking at... I mean, yes, the president certainly owes the nation a lot and black people, but I'm looking internally. We have not stood together on anything since what? The Montgomery Bus Boycott. That's the last time that we launched a movement and we sustained it. So you know what? Tonight, Ron Daniels, what you wrote and I read is absolutely brilliant, and I really wish you would highlight it. And before this program is over, you come to the podium and you read some of it, because what we have to do is breathe life into that. A time like this never was. We are everything we need to heal. We are everything we need to recover our children and our community, and the time is now, in the now time, and it's now or never.
Thank you, Susan Taylor. Thank you. George Fraser.
Yeah, I don't know how you improve on all of this. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I don't know how you improve on all of this. I mean, so I'm going to do my... If I could wave a magic wand, this is what I would demand of our president. Say the word "black" on public television at least a couple of times a week. Do that for us. Yes, you are, my president, beholden to black people, and you speak so eloquently and elegantly of hope and change. Bring us real hope and change. My daddy taught me, what you do speaks so loudly, I can't hear what you say. Now, where will we see hope and change? We will see it, and we must see it, as Dr. Daniels refers to them, in the dark ghettos of our country. There needs to be a reinvestment back into urban America. Allocations need to be specifically allotted for the dark ghettos, urban America. The infrastructure of urban America has to be reconsidered, has to be rebuilt, and it has to be infused with hope and change. We need a continued effort, an increased effort on urban education. It is in shambles. Some things have been done with historically black colleges, allocations have been made there, but during the next four years, I think that those allocations, I think that emphasis because of the state of emergency that urban education is in, that those efforts, those dollars need to be redoubled. But most importantly, if I could wave a magic wand, and I'll get into this later, I'm just going to put it out there to provoke you, I would ask the president to give us his database. Even just the black people in his database, because I know, just the black people, give us his database, because what he did, using social media, database analysis, putting the best quants and data crunches on a 40-million-base database, what he did, raising the kind of money he raised, connecting the dots, demonstrating to us how it is possible to connect disparate institutions and organizations, we need some lessons, and I'll talk more about that, we need some lessons in that, because I think that's at the cornerstone of, as Julian Malvoe wrote in your article last week, we need an economic plan that is not dependent upon the federal government. And I think at the core of that is how to manage and manipulate the incredible data that we have in the context of our community so that we can communicate with our people, so that we can mobilize our people, so that we can facilitate agitation within our people, and so that we can provide, so that we can influence outcomes. That's what data manipulation, data management, the leveraging of social media, because social media, at this moment in time, we are in the Model T stage of social media. We're in the Wilbur Wright stage of social media. So if that, if that in fact is the case, and it is the case, imagine the power and imagine what you can do properly leveraging social media 10, 15, 20, 30, 40 years from now. What is that going to look like? What kind of power will that have? And I think that's one of the great lessons. There are many lessons that we got from our president as a result of him being elected. He became a model for our children for the ages. Powerful, powerful attribute, a powerful thing that happened. But most importantly, he gave us a model for the best practices on leveraging databases and leveraging social media to organize and to connect our people at the push of a button in ways that we can only dream of.
Right.
We'll talk more about that later.
Give us the database, huh? All right. Dr. Julian Malvoe.
Well, I want to start with a bunch of shout-outs. I want to thank Dr. Ron Daniels for bringing us together. I want to thank Dr. Sidney Rebeau for making this space available to us. I want to stop for a moment and think about my brother and my friend, Dr. Ron Walters, and of course, his widow, Pat Walters, who has done so very much to maintain this legacy, this panel. It includes a number of amazing friends, including my pastor, Dr. Willie Wilson, my friend of very longstanding, Ms. Susan Taylor, and many others. I also want to shout out to the students at Howard University. Would the students please stand? Would the students, if there are students here, would you please stand up? I want to see our students. I don't think we can have these kinds of conversations unless we have a cross-generational outreach, because I'm 59 years old. I have a nephew who's 29 years old. It's a very interesting kind of dynamic that we have. The brother tells me, when he goes on Facebook, and I say, please don't write this down, he tells me, Julian, you're outdated. And I tell him, baby boy, don't put all your business on Facebook. But you know, what we have to deal with is the different ways, as George says, that we really do relate to social media, and those of us who have been here for a little while, have to spend a little time with y'all who haven't been here that long, because I think that there are some useful conversations to be had. Now, what do we ask President Barack Obama about? I'm with George. First of all, we ask him to say "black," and now then. He said "GBLT." He said "Latino." He said everything else, but he hasn't said "black." I said "everything," not everything, everything. One of my most great concerns is the pipeline. It's not higher education, although I'm a former college president. It's not K-12. It's the way we connect these things. When young people come to college, if they're not prepared, the reason they're not prepared is because they have not been prepared. None of our young people are dumb. None of them are, have issues. What they have is inadequate preparation. We look at some of these school systems in Chicago. Young people go to school only two-thirds as much the time as they go to school in Houston. So if a Chicago child comes to Howard University or been at college, and they're behind, that's not about them, that's about the way education is delivered. And so we have to talk about delivery, and then we have to talk about outcomes. This is the most important thing for our community. Arnie Duncan and the Race to the Top, with all due respect, is not the answer. The Race to the Top leaves people at the bottom. And so we really have to talk about that pipeline. HBCUs should not be cut, but the HBCUs should be increased. What I know about HBCUs and this new Parent PLUS plan is that a lot of our young people are being kicked to the curb. We cannot have that. We cannot allow that. Here's what happens at HBCUs, especially at privates. We have the ability to take somebody from where they are to where they need to be. We have the kind of infrastructure to allow people to be transformed and changed. We need to deal with that, and this president needs to deal with that. Second-issue employment. While the unemployment rate dropped last month, it did not drop for black women. In fact, it went up. It dropped ever so slightly for black men. At the same time, we have twice the official unemployment rates of other folks. And if you look at the real deal, African-American unemployment is not 14%. It is 26%. One, two, three, Reverend Wilson, you. One, two, three, Mark, you. In other words, one in four of us doesn't have a job. It is not meaningful to have these conversations about recovery unless you include people of African descent. Finally, these issues of gaps. Susan, I have never been to far rockaway New York. But here's what I know about far rockaway New York. 52% of the people there earn less than $30,000 a year. 52% of them also are people of African descent. Now, I'm not saying all of them, there's a, you know, there's a Venn curve, so it's not everybody, everybody. But here's what I know. People who are poor and people who are black, these people have not had their electricity restored in 16 days. This is deep. Now, I don't say their power restored, because they have the power. I say their electricity, because that's a different story. Their power ought to be to go down there to City Hall, to jack Mr. Bloomberg up, to jack Governor Cuomo up, and if necessary, to jack President Obama up, to say, how come we don't have electricity? You know, we learned some lessons from Katrina Imtangalisi, who was there, who lost a lot. This brother deserves a shout-out, lost a lot. But here's, don't be looking at your watch. You know? But we learned a whole lot of stuff about Katrina, but those lessons have not been applied to far rockaway New York. And everybody here, in the sound of my voice, here or wherever else y'all are, need to understand that we are far rockaway. That we are far rockaway. That this is deep, and this is profound, and this is how our people are treated. We have a president of African descent, but you know what? Everybody brown ain't down. And so one of the things we need to deal with is how we hold this president accountable. Now, this is a second term. First term, we understand he had to like wiggle and waggle, and he had to yabba-dah and babba-dah. But guess what? This is a second term, and while we love this president, we're excited about this president, we need stuff. And we need to ask for the stuff that we need, and we need to be emphatic about it. And if we are not emphatic, it's our fault, not anybody else's. You will not get fed in your mama's house if you do not bring your plate to the table.
All right.
And this is your mama's house. Bring your plate.
Thank you. Dr. Julian Malvoe. Mark Lamont Hill, before we take a break, Mark, please.
First, I want to echo everybody's thanks to Ron Daniels. I have so much love and admiration for Dr. Daniels, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to come back again to be a part of this. I'm also grateful to Howard University. As Dr. Malvoe said, the students here, the faculty here are amazing. I can't, we can't have this conversation at Columbia, you know? And every time I leave Columbia and come here, I'm reminded I'm probably in the wrong place, you know? I mean, this is really where...
That's right.
Where it's, hey, you're right. Being last makes it hard, because everybody said all the good, smart stuff, but I would say two things. One, we have to have an international perspective. At the same time that we concern ourselves with domestic issues, we can't lose sight of the fact that the continent of Africa is being underdeveloped at a historically almost unprecedented pace. It's amazing what's happening. We have to care about that. We have to care about the exportation of resources. We have to care about the vicious assault on the continent that the World Bank, the IMF, and the World Trade Organization have just committed on the continent consistently. We have to look at the way corporations are coming in and literally stealing revenues, stealing businesses, stealing land every single day. We have to care about that. We have to care about HIV/AIDS. As a pandemic on the continent, we have to care about that. We have to care about people who are brown and are on the continent of Africa right now. This president has normalized the culture of violence and normalized the culture of post-9/11 imperialism with drone strikes. I mean, innocent people, babies, children, women are being murdered in villages, and somebody sitting somewhere against a Nintendo game, launching these drone attacks. We have to care about that. We have to get... Black folk, African people have always been the mar compos of this global... If we don't care about this, no one will. We have to care about that. The other thing domestically that I think we have to think about, and some of this has been said, but I think on a broad scope, we have to care about the public. I grew up as an activist. We call it, we call it the people. But fundamentally, we have to restore a commitment and investment in the public. What we've seen over the last 30 years and has continued under Democratic and Republican administrations is a shift away from the public good and into the private interest. Everything that is public has become privatized. We call it neoliberalism, but it's just a fancy way of saying that we've decided that the market is the best way to solve some... Social Security, public good, will make it private. Our schools, public good, will make it private. Even the military, we're trying to outsource the military to places like Blackwater, making it private. When things get private, the people suffer. That's a problem. And the sister spoke about, I got you, the sister spoke about language. The way that the public gets defeated is by racializing it. So anything that's public gets made black. So public schools is us, public housing is us, public transportation is us, public options of healthcare becomes us, because they know that even vulnerable, poor, white people will vote against the public if they think it's us. But if we remind them that the public matters and can save all of us, then we can have a different conversation, because if we invested in public health, we would, we would deal with mental health. We would deal with the traumas that we've suffered over the last 400 years. We would deal with HIV/AIDS. We wouldn't be criminalizing. The only public housing we've invested in over the last 30 years is prison. If we reinvested in public housing in a real way, we wouldn't be tearing down New Orleans. We'd be building it up and not replacing it with luxury homes. We were replacing it for the people who had their homes washed away. We have to reinvest in that. We have to reinvest in public education so that we deal with the preparation gap, but also the investment gap, the teaching gap, the funding gap. If we dealt with those kinds of gaps in a public sense, we would have a very, very different conversation. And that's coming from not the 99% or the 47%, that's coming from the 7%. The person who went into that boat and couldn't pull the lever for Empire.
Right, right. Mark Lamont Hill, give him a round of applause. And Mark, know this television, we're going to take a commercial break for our audience listening on Sirius XM. Give yourselves a round of applause. This will just be a brief break. And when we come back, we'll get into the very next question. Meanwhile, while we're on this break, we're going to bring Dr. Daniels back to the microphone. Ron Daniels. Ron Daniels.
All right, how was that first half? We got some brain power up in here, what? All right, is Northern Illinois University in the house? All right. Is your college where I teach in the house? Oh, y'all, where y'all at? Y'all better stand up and say something up in here. What about Mega Evers College? All right, got a little Mega Evers up in here. Morgan State? All right, so Jordan Douglas College? Right? I'm just letting people know that, you know, you're being welcomed and hosted by Howard University, but there'll be some other students up in here too, right? University of Connecticut is not here, will be on the way. UMass Boston's got about 10 or 15 students coming, so we got some folk coming up in here. Is Askia Muhammad in the house? Askia, are you here? Askia, we wanted to just acknowledge WPFW. How many of y'all heard about this on WPFW? All right, okay. Well, WPFW, we have certain institutions in our community I call strategic institutions. And protecting Pacifica and those airways with our dollars becomes incredibly important. And so that's, today, black talk radio is threatened, radio stations in general are threatened, but we thank God that we do have WBAI, we do have WPFW, we have ways of getting the word out. Let's give a big round of applause to WPFW for being our media sponsor. I also want to say quickly that one of the things that you'll see, and we hope, and in the, in the, in the lobby. You can register, this is free, this is free and open to the public. We always have a free session at the State of the Black World Conference. But when I was coming up, in my early days, one of the first things I heard was freedom is not free. And we got a lot of people calling, it costs a little bit to do this, you know what I mean? It costs a little bit to do this, so we have to pay the bills, right? So there is a registration fee. Register in the lobby, you can register by credit card, but take the check, take cash. And we're going to do check checks. Let me tell you something about this check question. Out of all the years we have been doing State of the Black World Conference, we must have hundreds of checks, right? And we only had one problem coming out of the library. One problem after. So we take checks, we trust you to give us a check, and we all right. Because we've got to have that kind of trust and love for each other. So you can't register after the session, you can't register in the lobby, you can't fact sign up, because we have an incredible special session all day tomorrow. We'll be giving a special session dealing with the HIV, a special session on HIV/AIDS. We have a session dealing with Susan, leaders of the Black Family Summit, because under the leadership of Dr. Dennis, that's how I'm going to give him a doctoral degree, he's pulled together several black professional organizations. Because that's what we do at the State of the Black World Conference, by the way. And that's what George Frasier does. Our idea is very simple. We're not trying to produce a charismatic this, a charismatic that. We simply believe that we can learn from each other. We can learn from each other. So we put our best practices on the table. If you succeeded, fine. What, how did you succeed? If you failed, why did you fail? Share that with us. We know we got many, we have many, many problems, but the question is, we are disconnected as a people, and we got to bring that connectedness back together. So that's what we do with this State of the Black World 21st Century. We're not trying to take over anybody's anything. We're just trying to pull people together. From an African Senate progressive perspective, however, we're not neutral. You know, we, we know who we are as a people, and we know we're opposed to, you know, to racism, we're opposed to economic exploitation, we're opposed to gender inequality, we're opposed to people being exploited on the basis of their sexual orientation. We are progressive. So we're not reactionary. We're not, you know, because, you know, it's one thing to be black, but to be black is not sufficient, because we got some black folk. I'll just name one. Allen West, for example, you know, coming out of Florida. I mean, this is the anti-black black man. So it ain't just enough to be black. It's about the authenticity of a, of an ethic that goes all the way back to ancient Egypt that talks about my art, standing on righteousness and justice. That's who we are as a people. We are just people. We are righteous. And when we lose that, then we lose our minds, and we go off rail. So we, we're not neutral. We have a perspective on that. So we hope that you will sign up. We're going to have a Pan-African Policy Forum tomorrow afternoon, out of sight. In the evening, we're having a session focused, Sister Nkichi Taifa is probably in the audience. You all know her, who are locally here. Focus on the war on drugs. And by the way, tomorrow, we're going to have a session too on Brother Paradise Gray and some others are in the house. We're going to have a session on the fratricide and violence in the black community. How do we deal with that? That's an, it has external reasons, but it's also something we need to deal with internally. We've got a meeting on that tomorrow as well. We've been working in three cities on the war on drugs, and for the first time, people from Baltimore, Washington DC, as well as Pittsburgh, will be coming together to meet each other, to share with each other what they're doing in their respective cities. That's the kind of connectedness that George Frasier always talks about, connecting those dots, because we can't in fact learn from each other. Then all day Saturday, we're going to have working sessions where you go and you stay for six hours. You know me jumping around. Give yourself six hours to deal with education, to deal with environment and health, to deal with the whole question of the diaspora, because we, you know, we got, this ain't the same black community no more. Thankfully, you know, we got people from Jamaica. You go to, you go to, you go to Jackson, Mississippi, now you can get some jerk chicken. There are 50,000 Nigerians in Houston, Texas now. We have a new African community, and we got to pull ourselves together, because just because we all black don't mean that we all get along. So if we're talking about getting along with everybody else, we also got to get along with each other. Charity begins at home and spreads abroad. We need to embrace each other, but that means we got to work through that. So we have a whole thing on, on mobilizing the diaspora, the impact policy towards Africa and the Caribbean. And a session on economic development. George Frasier will be part of that, part of that. I see Mr. Blackonomics, Jim Kleeman, in the audience out there. We're going to be talking seriously. Brother Anderson's out there. And tomorrow, by the way, too, Brother Man Herb Boyd is in the house, too, the Amsterdam News. We're going to be talking about the whole issue of, of media. So anyway, it's my timer. It's time to bring us on back up. And by the way, we have a representative from FEMA here, too, to talk to us, Brother Randy, Reverend Randy Vaughn, from down in, what part of Texas you hail from? We're going to have somebody from FEMA here as well. So this is a rich, rich, rich conference, and then on Saturday night, we're going to be honoring a whole bunch of people with what we call Legacy Awards, including Sister Frances Quest Welsh, she's out here, right? Dr. Leonard Jeffries. I mean, a whole bunch of people we're going to be honoring with Legacy Awards. I turn it now back to our Lester hosts. Give them a big round of applause. She's off to a great start. Mark Thompson.
All right. Thank you. We're going to go back live on air in just a second. I just want to say it's good to be back in DC. I don't live here anymore, but I see some good old friends out there in the audience. And Dr. Walter's presence here on the stage also is meaningful, I think we all would agree. Let's give him another round of applause for his ancestry. And we're back here live at Crampton Auditorium here at Howard University, as we discuss the impact of the 2012 election on the state of emergency in black America. Those were some great responses, I think we all would agree, from our panelists to our first question about what we demand from the president in the second term. And some of those responses actually gave me five or six follow-up questions, but I'll come back to those a little bit later. I want to deal with some of the hot button issues, though. And now I'm going to direct a few questions to some of you individually and to groups of you, and then others of you can respond if you like. But first and foremost, of course, one of the big issues that creates a state of emergency in our community is the issue of joblessness and economic underdevelopment. So for George Frasier, Julianne Malvoe, and Mark Lamont Hill, I'll begin with you, and if others want to chime in after, how do we address joblessness and economic underdevelopment in our community? George, you want to go first?
Yeah. I forgot to do my shout outs. So I have to do, I just, I have to thank Ron. Ron, I love you. You are, you are a foot soldier, you are a lieutenant, and you are a general. I mean, you wear many hats, my brother. And I, I love you for that, right? You're deeply, deeply committed to our people, so I just want to just say that. Also, I'm really fortunate to have an incredible sister, and she happens to be, she'll be speaking tomorrow on education. She's in the audience. I want my sisters, I want my sisters, I want you to see my sisters. Emma, will you please say, Emma Fraser Pendleton? Now, Emma looks like a white lady, but we be black. Make no mistake about that, okay? And then, with, with us tonight is our director of marketing for our Who Would Have Thunk It Children's Book about three foster kids growing up on the streets of New York and teaching other children that it takes teamwork to make the dream work. And that's Janice Leek. Janice, thank you, please. Thank you. All right, so that's my shout out. Let me, now, for everybody up here, what I'm going to say is, you've heard this before, all right? So I'm going to be repetitious. In fact, I've been saying the same thing for 25 years. I've written three bestselling books saying the exact same thing differently, okay? And the books are about five years apart, and every five years, I have to refresh how I say the same thing, all right? Because we have to keep repeating it until we get it, okay? And we know that as young children, that, you know, your mama said, how many times am I going to have to tell you? Well, it's, it's the same with us. So, so here we go. There's a passage in the Bible, it is not an often quoted passage, it is John 5:30. It is a direct quote from Jesus. And Jesus said, "I of my own self can do nothing." End of quote. Now, this is Jesus. Jesus couldn't get it done on his own, by himself, in a vacuum. So what's up with you? Why would you think, we think, a people think, that we could achieve anything worth talking about on our own, by ourselves, in a vacuum, right? Look what Jesus did with just 12 disciples, and one turned on him. So, this passage said to me 25 years ago that we were born to network. We were born to collaborate with each other. We were born to work with and through each other. We were born to evolve from dependence to independence to interdependence. That is the highest form of cultural development, working interdependently. So let me say that differently. Black people, in case no one has told you, in case you have not observed this, have everything they need to succeed except each other. We have everything we need to succeed except each other. Jews have each other, Asians have each other, East Indians have each other, Arabs have each other, Hispanics have each other. We don't have each other. So, what does that mean? We are a $920 billion annual economy. If we were a nation, we'd be the 14th richest nation in the entire world, but our money goes in one direction away from us. We're some of America's most conspicuous consumers. So we're not poor, we're just broke, okay? So we have money. We have brain power, intellectual capital. If you just took the baby boomers, those of my generation, I'm 67. I know I look 35 or 40, but you know, black don't crack, right? Right? So, if you just took the baby boomer generation, just, just us, most of us in this audience, we have amassed, just one generation alone, over 500 billion hours of formal education and professional training. If you wanted to put a dollar value on that at just $10 an hour, and try to get an educational professional training for $10 an hour, that would mean that our collective intellectual capital base from one generation alone is worth in excess of $5 trillion. We have surpassed W.E.B. Du Bois' dream of the talented tenth. Remember his dream? If at least 10% of black people could get the finest education possible, he went to college education. We would then get that education, the 10% of us would come back to the community, we would invest in our community, and that 10% alone would uplift the entire race. That was Du Bois' dream. We have surpassed that dream. 17% of black people have at least a four-year college degree or better. So said another way, we have a lot of PhDs in our community. We now need some PHDoo's, okay? So we have brain power, right? Now, here's an interesting statistic that has been adjusted since the economic downturn, but it's, it's one that's not often talked about. 60% of the black workforce in America, 9 million of us, are in executive managerial, supervisory, professional specialty, vocational, technical, administrative, sales, and business ownership positions. That is an army of potential role models and mentors for those who are stuck in the cycle of poverty. In fact, there is no army in the entire world larger than the army of black people that have succeeded in this country. But yet, we still do not connect the dots appropriately and properly so that we can leverage more effectively our collective resources and intellectual capital.
George, I hate to cut you off, but I got to get to some other people, so.
Okay, so I'll put an end in that and pick that up on the next part.
Okay. Dr. Malvoe, addressing, how do we address the joblessness and economic underdevelopment?
Okay, I think there are three things that we can talk about. I'm going to start with the most difficult one, because we don't want to talk about the nature of capitalism.
That's right.
Capitalism is about the extraction of surplus value from people. Now, I don't know if y'all have heard that Walmart has decided that Thanksgiving Day is a day where they're going to sell stuff. So that means that the people who work at Walmart.
Got to work.
Will, will not have Thanksgiving Day with their families. But this is about the extraction of surplus value from people. If you work at Walmart and you've been trying to get a 40-hour week, they average about 26 hours, just a little less than what you need to get benefits. Then somebody says to you, I'm going to give you eight hours at time and a half, what you going to do? So we have to look at the ways that capitalism has extracted surplus value from us. Now, we don't want to talk about the nature of capitalism, because some people say it's too left. Some people say, well, we live in a capitalist society. But I say that we would not deal with employment issues until we deal with the nature of capitalism and the nature of exploitation. Now, the second thing I would say is that the economic crisis of African-American people did not start with President Barack Obama, will not end with President Barack Obama. There are some things that government can do, there are discretionary dollars. For example, I'm curious about how Solandra, this little company in California, who was basically generating wind, but they didn't generate any, got $535 million discretionary dollars from our president. Now, everybody here has said, somebody needs to say black. But you don't have to say black. You could say, get the money to Chicago, inner city. You could say, we wanted to go to Roxbury. We could say, put the money in Harlem. We can say, give it to Reverend Wilson over there in southeast DC. We can say all kind of other stuff, like you said, Solandra. And so while government cannot fix the gap, it can do some things to narrow the gap. And so one of our demands, Mark, needs to be, send the same kind of discretionary dollars that you sent other places to the black community. And we can say that. I don't understand this Solandra thing. I have been in the records, in the books, and those of y'all who know me know, I'm on the internet almost 24/7. I'm addicted. So I like Googled them, and I like trugled them, and I like called them and said, yo, what's up? How come y'all got all that money? And they said, we have no comment at this time. But we know, yeah, and they told me they had no comment. I'm going to fix them. But in any case, we know that they're discretionary dollars. I think the third thing that we really need to talk about in the context of discretionary dollars, in my previous comments about the pipeline, imagine this. Imagine that our president or somebody put a state-of-the-art high school in every, every inner city, that in southeast DC, that in Harlem, that in Roxbury, that in Bayview, Hunters Point, and San Francisco, just one state-of-the-art high school, so that our young people can understand that somebody cares about them. I go to high schools, and when I go to high schools, these places look like broke down, tow up from the flow up. I mean, bad. I went to a high school the other day, and a little girl, she reminded me of me, and she kept giving me soda. So of course, I'm over 50. At some point, the soda made me want to go to the restroom. Baby girl said, well, we have to go over here to the restroom. I said, no, I got to go to the restroom here. I said, "No, I got to go to the restroom here. I ain't walking across this campus to get to the restroom." She said, "But you can't use this restroom." I said, "Oh, yeah, I can." What the problem was with that restroom is, three out of the five doors and the toilets were gone. The baby girl had to go into her pocketbook to hand me toilet paper. This is what's happening to our schools. So let's just say, state-of-the-art high schools. The employment crisis is about poverty, it is about education, it is about affirmative action and discrimination. You know, Tamika is not going to get the job when Tammy does, and we know that. And I don't know, you know, multi-syllabic names, that's cool. But understand the discrimination that comes with multi-syllabic names. You know, let's just be clear that racism and discrimination are alive and well in our nation. And we have to be able to fight that. So when we talk about employment, we begin with the nature of capitalism. We study that, we understand it. We move on to talk about education, we move on to talk about discrimination, and we understand that our people are under siege. We understand that. And what I would also add is a whole nature of sexism in our community. You could not fight a war if you put half of the army on the sidelines. My brothers, I will tell you that we must work together. The sexism that riddles our community is pernicious and unacceptable.
All right. Mark, you want to address the topic, and then I know others want to do this.
I think it's been, let's keep rolling.
Rose, you want to speak to this one topic, and then I'm going to move on.
I really need to just say this very quickly. We know about discrimination, racism, and capitalism, but capitalism requires someone to be at the bottom. And historically, we are the chosen ones. And until we realize the concept of the illusion of inclusion, one thing that bothers me about the election of the president, I'm so overjoyed that he was elected, but the illusion of inclusion is going to be heightened. I know in my little city, where we're fighting to keep this monument from the Klan from going up on public property, people will say, "We don't care about that dead Klansman. We got a black president, we got a black mayor." Until we address the problem that Carter G. Woodson was talking about, the miseducation of Negroes, we will continue to carve out the back door, we will continue not to be the Talented Ten, to lift back, lift up our people. The problem is, the educational system is designed to keep us at the bottom. And we will not fight to include African history. We had a beautiful tour today of all these wonderful, beautiful things that came from Kemet, ancient Africa. Our children don't know that the first mathematicians and the first geniuses were black. And as long as they feel subordinate and inferior, they will never, as a collective, make decisions in their best interest. And we are talking to the choir here, but we got to figure out how to take this message outside of this building, how to take this message in Selma and Harlem, so that our people will realize their greatness. And I think that's what Sister Susan is trying to do, to get mentors. Then she just doesn't want mentors to take you to the movie, but take you to the right movie. She doesn't need mentors just to read you a book, but to read you stories about Claudette, the woman who stood up against slavery, not just Harriet Tubman. We will not solve the economic crisis until we solve the mental enslavement of our people, which is what the Reverend calls this post-traumatic slave syndrome. We got to deal with that if we ought to have a way to find some justice. Since the schools won't do it, because the schools are still controlled by the white supremacists, they're controlled. So it's up to us, like the Jews and other groups, to find ways to educate our people. One last point. The Jews were in the same position that we were in before Nazi Germany. They were cooperating, trying to assimilate, they were even joining the Nazi Party. We got to look back in history and find out, how is it they arrived at this decision? Never forget, never again. We got to reach that point in our history to move forward.
Fire Rose straight. M. Tangalisa, you want to address joblessness and underdevelopment, economic underdevelopment, quickly, please?
Yes, from more than one perspective. A substantial part of my own work on the activist side of my life was doing something called community-based economic development. That's as close as you get to African socialism in America, where people in communities do economic development rather than individuals doing entrepreneurship. Those don't have to be polar opposites, no more than we have to think that the only way we can solve our problem is to focus on our internal selves, and exclude from our strategic direction focusing on public policy and the impact that it has on us. It's not, to me, it's not either or, it's both and. Because when we started doing community-based economic development, Julian, we started with the analysis of capitalism, that you will never be liberated as long as the capitalist system is intact. I don't care what white folks tell you, what anybody else tells you. It ain't going to happen, because it hasn't happened for the majority of white people in America, or any other people in America. So what makes us think capitalism will be the engine to liberate us? But capitalism should not be confused with socially irresponsible entrepreneurship. That means each one reach one. If you make it, you reach back and get somebody. I don't want to make any more black millionaires, if they're socially irresponsible, if they spend the money doing what they've always been doing. I don't want to produce any black millionaires, especially with my hard-earned dollars. What I want is a socially responsible sister or brother who comes back into that community to rebuild that community. Now, one of the problems that I think we can't address is how we spend the money we do have. 90% of our money gets spent for housing, medical care, food services, and transportation. But look at the alignment of our businesses, barber shops, beauty parlors, barrooms, and burial houses. Our economy is misstructured, and it is wrongly structured. And what I want to see is the brightest minds among us, the darkest minds among us, figure out how to restructure the economy in the community, so that that $900 billion that we do have gets redirected towards our own goal. Because if we took, the fact is, we have 1.9 million black-owned businesses in the country, only 106,000 of them are able to employ anyone. If we focused on that alone, in addition to demanding from the administration, like we used to demand from the administration, set-asides. Let's quit pretending as though set-asides didn't make a difference. Full source hiring agreements made a difference, because that's your public dollars, it's our public dollars. We can't give the racists a pass, whether they are known racists, unknown racists, intentional racists, or unintentional racists. As long as the structure relegates us to the bottom, we need to start saying that again, and quit pretending that we're living in a post-racial America. We're not in a post-racial or post-racist in America. It is still racism, and we need to learn how to call it exactly that again, and quit trying to be so cute just because we have a black president. So I'm saying it's a multifaceted solution, not limited to a public policy intervention singularly, or an internal organization principle singularly, but both of them together, and in that way, we can stop the polarized discussion that we have. Or, one of us says, "It's education." The other says, "Start businesses." The other says, "Do job training." The other says, "Go home and wash your face again." The other says, "Go to church." And we get caught into these dynamics where we can't come together, because each of us believes our view is the only answer. What we need to simply say is, each of us has some truth and some relevance in our position, why don't we take the strengths each of us brings to the table to devise a strategy that we can not only navigate, but evaluate to determine how effective it is, as opposed to consistently retoricizing about it? Ask ourselves what will work. Finally, we need to go back to Africa, because Africa is looking for us. I've worked in South Africa, Tanzania, Nigeria, they are looking for African-Americans, the new ethnic group, according to them, the new ethnic Africans. They're looking to us for technology, but they're looking to us for capital. We've got enough capital in black America alone to make a fundamental difference in Africa. China is in Africa. Europe is in Africa. They keep asking me, "Where, y'all?" And I keep saying, "I don't know." We're so busy being American, we've forgotten about being Africa. That's another strategy to unemployment that I at least want to put on the table as well.
Yeah. Quickly, real quick, because I want to...
Like, three things. Number one, we need to look at banking. The banking industry got $797 billion from our government to bail themselves out. How much of that trickle down?
That's right.
We have to look at banking, and we do have to look at public policy around that. Because this could be required, that as a condition of you getting this money, you trickle some of it down. Number two, when we look at the bailout of General Motors and the other automotive industries, here's one of the things that was very weird. At the same time that they got a bailout, the number of African-American-owned auto dealerships dropped by about 40%.
Wow.
Why did that happen? It happened because they chose not to deal with African-American dealers. Now, again, the question is, our tax dollars go into this, and we need to make demands about that. Number three, we look at the so-called affirmative action issue. I say so-called in some of these states. Everybody in Michigan pays for the University of Michigan, but everybody in Michigan does not have access to the University of Michigan. Everybody in California pays for the University of California, but everybody in California, 2%, 2%. When I taught at UC Berkeley, it was about 9%. Now, it's 2% of the undergrads are at UC Berkeley. If we pay tax dollars, it should not be a transfer from us to melanin-deprived individuals.
Very good point.
So we need to look at the ways that we equalize public policy, even as we do other things. We have been shy about bringing our demands to the table, but we should look at it not as affirmative action, but as a return to our tax dollar.
That's right, good point. George, real quick.
Quick solution to black social responsibility. This is huge. A quick solution to black social responsibility. I did a paper on why black people are not succeeding. Why are we not succeeding? And one of the bullet points on the paper was that we have no system in our culture to socially isolate and ostracize those who are black of means that do not reinvest back into our own community. If you are a Jew of means, and you do not give back to the Jewish community, you are socially isolated and ostracized. You are out. So we must put into place, into our value system, the ability to socially isolate and ostracize. How do you do that? Stop celebrating these Negroes and giving them awards and recognition for not doing anything other than being a good baseball player. That's not enough. That's high personal achievement, that is not excellence. So we have to redefine excellent, socially isolate and ostracize those who earn lots of money but do little or nothing. Now, we know who they are. We know the Magic Johnsons of the world, and we know who they are, but most don't do what they ought to be doing. We need to put that into place. A system to socially isolate and ostracize those that do not reinvest back into their own community.
Because most of their revenue comes from us anyway. And if we don't sanction them, then they don't get the glory.
It's the same investment that Dr. Malvoa was talking about. That's still our money.
I do have a question. I do have a question. And I want to ask, because you all are so brilliant, and everyone is so right. But what is the organizing force? The "we"? How do we make this happen? What is the nucleus of this? You know, I'm thinking about Rochester, New York. Rochester was graduating, the lowest graduation rate of our brothers, our young brothers in the nation, 9%. The head of that school system was hired by Chicago. Elevated to, I mean, to Chicago, a school system that was failing our children, failing black boys, and we know that our Secretary of Education came from Chicago. Right? He was run out of Chicago, the one from Rochester, by two or three conscious people led by Philip Jackson, the activist in Chicago, who just went on the airwaves, who went to churches, who organized people. You know, I'm not putting extra weight on our church leaders, but I am. I'm saying, where are we? We're in the sanctuary, we're in our little clubs, we're in our organizations, we're in our sororities and our fraternities. They have to do more. Where do you get the word? Well, how do we know what to do? We have no agenda. You're working on one thing in a small group over here. We have to bring, what is the organizing force? I'm asking you, Jeff, because I know you know. I've seen you do it. You did it with us in Charlotte just a few weeks ago. How do we begin to create a movement that delivers on everything that we're talking about, and what you wrote about, Ron, so very brilliantly? How do we organize it?
Isn't the Institute of the Black World one of those instruments?
It is, but, okay, but I'm asking, how do we move beyond the discussion, so that when we come back four years from now, we're not talking about the very same issues? How do we begin to move the needle? Here's what's happening. Wait a second, we are moving in the wrong direction. I left Essence when I learned that 80% of black 4th graders were reading below grade level. I couldn't believe it. I called Marion Wright out, and I said, "This couldn't be true." She said, "But it is." You know what year that was? We started Essence Cares right after Katrina, 2005. I left Essence four years ago. The number today is 86% of black 4th graders are reading below grade level. And when we look at our children across the board, we are performing at a lower degree than Latinos for whom English is a second language. So I'm saying, this is so rich, and I want to take notes, I'm going to get a tape of this, because everything that you all are saying is brilliant. But you know what I want? A plan.
Right. Well, let me do this. Let me do this, because...
Because I think one of the things that's extraordinarily important is that when we talk about "we," this is a very erudite panel. But there are 42% of black women who had households who were in poverty. They're not in this conversation, they're just trying to make it. You've got these brothers who are on the street, they're just trying to make it. So "we" have to talk about "we" in much broader perspectives than those who are intellectuals, those who are professors, those who come out to events like this. We really have to talk about reaching out to other people of African descent who think that public policy doesn't belong to them.
You know what? I want to say, I'm going to finish, and I'm not going to say another word. We have, no, no, this is the real deal. You know, people see what your little makeup on and your extensions in your hand, a couple of titles, and think that you were born this way. I was a poor, single mother when the marriage broke up, and I'm going to tell you, when you're trying to get food on your table, and keep a roof over your head, you're not out there fighting the battle for yourself. And those of us who are the most, we are the most highly educated and fortunate black people on the planet, but we have no plan. So I'm not saying that, you know, I'm asking, who is the "we," and where do we meet, and where do we begin to structure the movement? That's what I'm asking, like Dr. King did.
I think, I know you mentioned Reverend Wilson, and you mentioned Jeff in that, and since you raised that question, Susan Taylor, I want to ask two of them, if they want to address that briefly, who is the "we," and then the organizing, and then there are a couple of other pertinent issues we want to try to get to before nine, but Rev and...
May I respond after they do? Susan just raised a question in terms of how Dr. King was able to do what he was able to do. His, and when you talk about churches, unfortunately, the majority of our church leadership can't do what you've asked to be done. And that is because of their theology, and how, you know, historically, when it going, Dr. King taught what he learned from Mahatma Gandhi, and fused it with the Beatitudes from the Scriptures. He taught, he learned Satyagraha, the God force within, and he learned Ahimsa, moral jujitsu, how you get your enemy off balance by being so correct, that he throws his own self out of whack. I don't want to get into a deep existential extrapolation, but I got to respond to what Dr. Fraser said here. Brother Fraser said a moment ago, when Jesus said, "I can do nothing of myself," he was referring to the power that was within him, which was the God power. Psalm 82:6 says, "All of you are gods."
That's right.
But the reason you are dying, the reason you're in the position that you're in, you don't know who you are. There's a difference between believing you a nigger and believing you are God. Now, I didn't say "the God," I said "a God." And that one thought, the knowledge of who you are. So if you're talking about bringing all these splintered people together who've been divided based on the brainwashing and how they've been trained and conditioned, that has never been addressed, to this day, until that is addressed. And what is more dividing even today than ever before, many of our preachers are dividing more of our people than anybody with this prosperous theology that says to their people, "If you have something, it's because you have favor with God, and don't be concerned about your brothers and sisters that you left behind in Anacostia and moved out into Maryland, because God has favored you." And that's what's being taught by our preachers. And that is what divides those who have, who think they have some sense, from those who don't, or who think they are not educated, from those who think they are. And until we begin to address that, there are so many behaviors that we have, that date all the way back to slavery, that we... that date all the way back to slavery that we never address that are still, we're still acting out. The jealousy, the envy, the backbiting, the who's going to be in charge, the who's the most important, all of these things. When we did the Million Man March, this book got to be written one day. All the things, and I'm talking about so-called leaders in our community who did everything they could to stop it from happening, even stopping Dr. Height in the airport and telling her a whole lot of garbage and, and, and going down to the conventions. And I'm not calling any names, but those were some of the first people who called me three days before the march, "When do I speak?"
That's right.
"What is my time on the program?" You know, but, but until we, until we address some of these behaviors and attitudes and mentalities that we have as a community of people, you know, we could have this conversation, just like you say, four years from now, and it'll be worse than it is today.
It's a good point. Hold it. Because I want to try to embed another urgent topic here that State of the Black World Conference raised. And we're talking about the organizing which applies to all of this. Rev. Wilson just brought up a point about the way we interact with each other, some of the stuff we still manifest from slavery, even the self-hatred. We know that is no greater manifested than in the violence and fratricide we see in our community. So Jeff, as you talk now even about the organizing as a black, as black males, what is, what kind of organizing, what kind of things do we need to do to address the violence that's going on amongst ourselves and our own communities? And M. Tangalisi, I'm going to get you too. Yeah. Good, Jeff.
Okay. I'm way too young to be this tired. And, no, 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 no. And what I mean by that is, I, to your point and to Susan's question, I want to work with people who don't want to be on stage. Who, wait, just listen, please. Who don't need cameras, who aren't looking to make a public statement, who don't need a press release to define them, who don't need seats filled to determine whether the event was effective, who aren't looking for accolades to determine how effective their leadership is.
Take your time, brother.
If we're dealing with violence, if we're dealing with economic development, if we're dealing with a plethora of issues, I want, I want to, I want to talk, if, if we want to talk about violence, violence does not exist because young people like to be violent. I don't know no youngins that want to bang. I don't know no youngins that won't shoot nobody. I know young people that want opportunity. And I know that they will take opportunity if they don't feel like opportunity is available. Now, we can have the conversation about what opportunity is available and what opportunity is not available. We can talk about the reality that, we could talk about all of that. I, I, I guess where I want to be is, I, I, I want to see us in a place where these kind of socially conscious entertainment sessions become less of our desire. And our desire is for architects to be architects. And I think that there are a whole lot of soldiers trying to be architects and architects disconnected from the conversation. What is my point? My point is that in a fight, in a battle, there are soldiers, there are generals, and there are architects. And I think that we are void of architects who are willing to, in the privacy of silence, put together a plan. Most of you, how many of you all live in something? It's not a rhetorical question. How many of you all live in something? A house, an apartment, a box, something? How many of you all personally know the architect who designed where you live? Most of you don't. How many of you know the builder who built the structure you live in? Most of you don't. It's not a prerequisite to know the architect and the builder in order to use that house as a place to create legacy. If we had architects and builders in a place where, without cameras and without lights and without the need of, 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 of all of this stuff, feeling comfortable enough to create plans and strategy that they hand over to builders who know how to create institution and infrastructure, who then give that to generals who have the ability as executive directors and managers and presidents to be able to hire sergeants and soldiers to work out of them? I'm not, I, I, stop, let's stop talking about the people that don't get it. I, I don't care about the pastors who are talking about prosperity ministry. I don't care about the people who don't get it. I don't, I don't care about the civil rights celebrities. I care about the people that want to do the work. And, and if we're talking about violence in, 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 in local communities and, and talking about architects and infrastructure, that, we, we talk, there, there's some guy marching across the country trying to raise $50 million to build a community center in Chicago. That don't make no damn sense. If you've got 2,000 churches in Chicago, most of which are closed three days a week to the public, you've got a community center. And so if you've got a church that's closed on Wednesdays, get somebody to go into the church on Wednesday and tutor some kids. Pay the church enough to keep the lights on and to pay for the guy, Mr. Johnson, to come open up the doors. And then get former educators who want to give time but don't know where they can to come in on Wednesday. On Thursday, get Dr. Malvo and a bunch of real smart economic folks to come and do financial literacy. Pay Mr. Johnson to come open the door and pay for the lights. On Friday, put up some Nintendos. And get some former police officers or the police officers that aren't jerks who will want to work with young people, because there are some. And get some brothers who have kids who want to be there in the community and have them play on Playstation, playing cards with some kids. You are now talking about a community center that only costs you enough for volunteers and to pay Mr. Will, Pastor Wilson for the lights and Mr. Johnson to come open the door and unlock their simple solutions to these issues to get kids up off the street while we simultaneously are dealing with the 10,000-foot-high institutional development issues. We don't have to do one or the other. It's about doing all of them collectively. Play chess, not checkers. And finally, because this is the last comment I'm going to make clearly, play chess. Chess means you figure out the role you play and play it. The bishop is never sitting around saying, "I wonder what the rook is doing." Be the bishop. Slide diagonally. And slide diagonally as gangster as you can. Be the knight. Move in an L shape, player. And, and don't worry about what the pawn is doing. King, stop trying to be a queen. And if you would... No, see, that's not what I meant by that. That's not what I meant by that. That's not what I meant by that. Simply what I mean is, we spend so much time playing checkers, which is, let me get to the end and king me. And any of us that have played checkers long enough know that normally at the end of the game, you've got a bunch of kings sliding across the board, and nobody wins. What chess acknowledges is that we look different and we move different, but we're fighting for the same thing. And I don't have to hate on you while you're doing what you do or tell you that you need to be doing what I'm doing. I can just watch from afar and be like, dang, that's a bad rook over there doing his thing. But I'm a bishop that's going to slide over here to do my thing. And when a little bitty, itty-bitty pawn that is gangster enough to do their job can move into position, they can become any other piece on the board. Let us do simple things in, in, in the process of developing these solutions.
Okay. No, hold, hold it. Let me, I got to do something now. Outstanding, Jeff. It's all right. M. Tangalisi and Mark, I know we want to get you guys in. Let me just say this. Only got about, this time has flown, we've got about 10 minutes left on the broadcast. And then just a few extra minutes before we go to the floor. So if, if the two of you could hold, this is one of the issue I think we want to address and we want the national audience to hear. And we'll get to the others, just, I just want to put this issue on the table. And we know what is going on with our voting rights. And so Rose, I just wanted you to take a few moments to address that issue. What is going on with that? And what do we need to do to continue to protect, defend, and expand our voting rights? Because without the vote, then we're not able to affect a policy, to bring together the accountability that we want to. And then the other issues, I'm going to get to Mark and M. Tangalisi, but I want to just get this on the broadcast, if you would.
Real quickly. Thank you, thank you. In terms of answering the question about how do you develop a movement? I think the movement right now has to be centered around the voting rights issue. We will be celebrating the 48th anniversary of Bloody Sunday in Selma in a few months. Next year, we will celebrate the 50th anniversary of the March on Washington. This is the golden time when people have freedom on their minds because of the election of President Obama. It's an opportune time to come up with that plan and to organize and mobilize. I talked to SCLC people today and members of your, of our organization. They are willing to form that coalition with the state of the black world and to raise the issue of the attacks against women, the immigration issues. But voting suppression is at the heart of it. With the election of President Obama, remember, the 10 states that his opposition took were the Confederate states. White supremacy is ringing supreme. Efforts to depress the vote are going to escalate and not de-escalate. This is the time to organize around the wrong wing. Let's stop calling them the right wing. They are the wrong wing. Every time we call them the right wing, we are giving them a validity they do not deserve. So the case now before the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court did not decide to hear that case until after the election. Montavano in Alabama filed a case challenging Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act. The Supreme Court has decided to hear it. It was only five years ago they heard a case and validated the Voting Rights Act. So this is the time. I invite all of you to come to Selma, not to commemorate, but to ignite this movement. I've also asked my sister Susan to come because I think this movement has to be multifaceted. I wanted to talk to those 30,000 or 40,000 people. I want to recruit people to be, to become the, the I-Care movement. But I also want us to understand what's happening in the southern states. We're going to pay a price for having a black president. As I said, there's not one white Democrat statewide that was elected. This is true throughout the South. Voter suppression laws are increased, and the movement to succeed from the Union. In my little city, our president, pro temp of the council, is a part of a movement, a petition to separate the South from the North, keeping us there enslaved. So I'm thinking, if we use these moments in history, and let me just say this quickly. They're always trying to take our history. There's an effort now by the Republicans to celebrate the 50th anniversary of what happened in Selma, what happened in Birmingham, what happened in Montgomery. This is a time to use the energy from President Obama's success and to come up with a concrete plan. And I'm suggesting that to kick off this plan in Selma, we are now going to march all the way from Selma to Montgomery again. Usually, we only do it five years. But now, we must convince our people that we must fight harder because there is another reconstruction that's taking place. We forget that black men have the right to vote with the 15th Amendment. We forget that through Klan violence and through the US Supreme Court, that right to vote was taken away. It can happen again. We cannot be confused by the illusion of inclusion. President Obama has made it even harder. But it has also created an opportunity for us, for soldiers and generals and everybody, to make sure that we use this energy from young people. I was impressed. We went to Florida to work because we knew he couldn't win Alabama. I had young women on welfare to say, "Ms. Sanders, I want to go with you. There's a new energy out of here. There's a new opportunity." But like you said, we have to take the plan to the people because the people will not come to us. See you in Selma, March 2nd and 3rd to begin this plan.
You know, one thing, and, and just appreciate that, just even in terms of a bit of housekeeping while, while we're still on the air, I want to just go around, and if each of you could share your website or your Twitter address, because people are going to call me tomorrow and say, "How do I get in touch with Jeff and Rose and Julianne and George and Susan?" So we just go around the table right now before we go off air and have each of you state, state your name and where we can find you in social media.
I'm M. Tangalisi Sanjika. I don't use social media.
You're anti-social media.
No, 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 I'm not anti. No, 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 it's a, it's a management issue. Strictly a management issue. But you may, you may email me at wazuri, W-A-Z-U-R-I, at AOL.com. And I hope I get a chance to, to comment because there's something important that I want to say.
Okay, Jeff.
Jeff's Nation on Twitter and Jeff Johnson on Facebook.
Email firerose@gmail.com. Firerose@gmail.com.
F-A-Y-A, Rose.
F-A-Y-A.
Rose at gmail.com. Rev. Wilson.
Reverend Willie Wilson, Union Temple Baptist Church dot com.
Susan Taylor, you find me at caresmentoring.org. caresmentoring.org. Log on and get connected.
George.
George Fraser, follow me on Facebook, please, @georgcfraser, either on our fan page. And number two, you can, if you want to find out everything we're doing at FraserNet, without 51,000 folks in our network, you can follow or connect with us at www.frazernet.com. That's F-R-A-S, as in Sam, E-R-N-E-T dot com.
Julianne Malvoe. Twitter is @drjlastword. Facebook, Julianne Malvoe. Fan page, the other page is full. And email julienne malvoe at AOL dot com.
Mark Lamont Hill on Facebook, Mark Lamont Hill on Twitter. And if you want to see the work that Jeff and I are doing with our speakers bureau that we just started, you can go to theelitevoices.com.
All right. And now, M. Tangalisi.
Yeah, and by the way, sure, I do have a Facebook and LinkedIn account. I just don't use it often. But let me, let me say this about the violence issue, real briefly. One of the major ways to address the violence problem is to resolve the drug problem. In New Orleans, for instance, we know, we know where 99, where 99% of the murders that take place in that city, and there are four or five every week, are directly related to drug trafficking. When we stop the drug flow in that city, we will, we will resolve a significant part of the problem of violence among the youth. That's, that's not solving the psychosocial dimension of why people do that. But I'm saying that the immediate cause we have identified is directly related to drugs, and everybody in that city knows it. It's time that we end this war on drugs and stop drugs from coming in this country. I think that will contribute significantly to reducing the drug, the violence problem. But the second response I wanted to make is this. With all the conversation that we've had, one of my recommendations is that we go back and study our own organizational history. We've been here before. These conversations that we're having are not new to any of us. We've had leader after leader after leader after leader, organization after organization after organization before Reconstruction and especially after Reconstruction moving into the 20th century that have tried to address the underdevelopment of the African-descended population in this country, the relative marginal position of black people in this country. There have been various strategies and various tactics, and there's been a tremendous amount of progress. Sometimes, we want success tomorrow. The reality is, to eliminate the oppression that we are facing as a people. I think it's going to take us some time to figure out among ourselves exactly how to do that. So my advice is this. We need to leave this IBWD conference with a commitment to resume a strategic discussion where everybody is asked to write strategic resolves and approaches and look at history and ask, "Has anyone done this before and what was the outcome?" Look at our local case study models. Is anything happening that is working? And begin to ask, rather than always asking the macroscopic questions, let's ask the medium and the microscopic questions. And at the same time, have a public policy agenda and a community development agenda, because we need them both. I really think we need to go back in order to look forward and act like we believe that Sankofa is more than just a concept.
Really quickly, gun control. If you talk about the drug issue in New Orleans...
And gun control.
We're going to talk about the proliferation of guns.
That goes with it, Julianne.
One of the things that I think was lacking in this presidential debate is nobody talked about gun control. I'm not going to, I saw Mark doing this, means he's... I'm not gonna, I saw Mark doing this, means he's out of time, but let's just talk about in Chicago, already this year, nearly 500 murders. We can talk about drugs, but let's talk about how all these people get guns.
Well, I think they go together.
And why people are reluctant, why people, why our leaders are reluctant to have the gun conversation.
I concur with that.
Mark, we're, we're gonna get one more comment from our panel, and then we're going to, uh, take questions from the floor, Mark Lamont Hill.
Okay, um, there's been so much said, uh...
Go ahead.
Wow, okay. First, uh, I think it's really, I mean, Jeff said so much of what I, what I would've said, he said it better, so I won't be redundant. I, I do think though that it's important for us not to wait for critical mass for action. I think we can become ahistorical and begin to believe that there was this moment where all black folk were committed to a struggle and engaged in it, when at almost every moment, there was always a very narrow slice of people committed to radical change who did the work. 13, 14% of black folk were struggling for civil rights, most black folk were fighting against it, most black folk were telling King to be quiet, most black folk were pushing Malcolm X to the margins, and so we don't need to wait until everybody's on the same page to move, because if we wait for that, it will never happen. We need to be committed to moving right now. The other thing is, in terms of, because I, I'm so glad that Susan asked for a plan, because these can just be, it's like church, right? You know, everybody sing, dance, and shout, and say, we had a good church, you just mean you had fun. And not leave with anything. I think a plan includes joining an organization. We seem to be at this moment in history where we feel like people don't need organizations and institutions, because of the fetishization of the market, because of our belief in MySpace, Facebook, you, everybody's an individual, everybody wants to be a celebrity, everybody wants to be a star, we forget about this collective. I think everybody should leave this conference with a commitment, not to starting an organization, we don't need any more organizations, we don't need 50 million nonprofits, we don't need 50 million engineers, we need people to make a commitment to joining an organization. And as Jeff said, doesn't mean join an organization to get the microphone, doesn't mean join an organization to lead, it means join an organization to do the work oftentimes behind the scenes. The thing that, to me, has gotten us across, has gotten us over, has been that commitment. When I think about the times, and I've worked with just about everybody on the stage on something, whether it's the Chisholm Commission, Susan and I worked together on Third World Press, when Hakeem Madaboude made a call and said, we need to make, we need to support Third World Press, we didn't look for microphones, we didn't look for, uh, big donors, we made phone calls, we called our people together, and we made, we did the work. We called young people, we called elders, we raised our own money, and we helped save an institution of ours because it needed to be done. I spent the last, I spent almost my entire adult life, and really much of my teenage life, working with Mumia Abu Jamal, and two years ago, after 30 years of protracted struggle, he was moved off of death row. We, when we fight, we win. It, it's really kind of that simple. And at every step of the way, people said it couldn't be done. And, and perhaps what's most interesting is also, as academics, sometimes we can become so ideologically pure, that we lose sight of the fact that there are real things at stake. When Mumia got moved off of death row, there were so many people, white liberal activists, anti-death penalty activists, anti-incarceration people, like myself, I'm a prison abolitionist, but we, they said, this is not a victory. Mumia's off of death row, but it's not a victory because he should be home, he should not even accept life in prison as a, as an alternative. If he cannot leave death row and go home, then this was not a victory. And I went and saw Mumia about a month after that, after I had those conferences, we were all in Philly, we all, remember that, we were all in Philly, assembled at the Constitution Center talking about this. I went to see Mumia about a month later, and he had, he had, I gave him a hug, we worked on a book together, the first time I got to touch him, not through a glass. I gave him a hug and he, and he said, you know, last week I got to hug my wife for the first time, I got to kiss my children for the first time, he said, I got to speak to the people who've been fighting for me for the first time in person. And I said, what about all, I said, these people are saying that it's not a real victory because we didn't get absolute victory. And you know what he said? Shit. Any, he said, anybody who said that ain't never been on death row. We, there's no perfect solution, there's no problem-free solution, but we cannot let, we can, really, we cannot let perfection be the enemy of what's possible. We have to commit to what's possible, y'all. And that means come together and work. Now for me, that means, as, as a grassroots activist, that means being on the ground, working with organizations. I, I, like I said, I was part of 7%, I, I couldn't pull the lever for Empire, I didn't vote, I didn't vote for President Obama, but I was still excited, I voted Green. Just to be clear. But I was still excited to see my fraternity joint, do 1911 United, not because I wanted to see another super PAC forum per se, but because I was excited that two black institutions and organizations were committed to coming together on the ground and building something bigger than us. 900 years of black fraternities and sororities almost, and we ain't got a hospital, a house, a school, we just got a bunch of strolls and check. We actually built something for once. Now imagine if we built an interest to African people. I saw Jeff, in, in the course of like two months, put together an organization to commit people to voting in the interest of our people. He hit the ground, and we used our popular culture, we used our rappers, we used our models, we used our athletes, we used our voices, we used our teachers, to build something bigger than us, we can do this. He didn't wait for a moment of perfection, he, he just went out and did something. That's all I'm saying, I don't want to keep going, I'm just saying, we have to, at some point, if you don't remember anything else I said, the biggest problem in the world today is there's too many people that don't do anything. So when we leave here today, let's just commit to doing something.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you, Mark. Now, um, we want to involve you in the audience, students really, and I'm gonna name some of the universities that are present and ask those students who are here from those institutions to approach the microphone. One representative, okay. Dr. Dane says one representative from, uh... Students only. Students only. Um, uh, to this microphone here, uh, right here, a representative from Howard, Northern Illinois, I believe, is present, Morgan State, Sojourner Douglas, and Medgar Evers. And we have the representative from York College, York College is present, and that person who's gonna ask that question is Joshua Cannington, is that correct? He's gonna go first, but other, if there's a student representative from each of the universities, students, one representative, if you would come forward and approach the microphone with your question. Joshua, is that you?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, all right. Is Joshua here?
I represent Joshua.
You're representing Joshua, who's representing York? Okay, go right ahead.
Good evening. Um, one of the panelists said earlier that they don't know one gang banger who wants, they don't know one person who wants to gang bang, but definitely in certain urban communities, certain urban cities, gang banging is romanticized. It's an issue that needs to be addressed, not ignored. So, how do you feel about that?
From, uh... And so I, I, saying that young people don't want to bang is, is not speaking to the fact that it's not glorified, it's speaking to the fact that if you give them another option, they're gonna take it. And so I, I can glorify something all day long, but normally, I'm accepting that because one, I've either been brainwashed, two, or two, I don't believe anything else exists that's better. And so I think that we address it by, one, when you, when you deal with recidivism and prison, when you look at recidivism in prison, you are less likely, you are 5% less likely to go back to prison if you take a course. If you graduate from a course, you are more likely, more likely to not go back, so on and so forth. So, so opportunity creates possibility. Possibility says, I got something to live for. Something to live for says that I want to do things that add to my life and not take away from it. And so I think that, that all of us, in, in one way, shape, or form, have talked about from a communal level, how do we put people in a place where they've got more opportunity? And whether that comes from a government program through subsidies, or whether that comes from the community doing a better job of opening doors, is, is not a, is, it, it, there's not a silver bullet to that. It's how do we, through, I think as Mark said, doing something? Because all of us, I, I know young people who have stopped banging because somebody just loved them.
Yes.
Um, they, they love them enough to say, wait a minute, maybe I don't need to go out like this. And now there's somebody who cares about me enough that I don't want to disappoint in a way that I'm gonna start at least thinking about making decisions differently. Is that, is that gonna solve all of it? No, because at some point, you still need a job, you still need opportunity. So, so my, my point in saying that, um, I don't know anybody that wants to bang, when I've sat with cats banging, they say, look, if you give me a job where I feel like I can take care of my family, I stop doing this tomorrow.
Hmm, right.
Um, and so we, we've got to look at it from the standpoint of how do we begin to stack opportunity in a way that slowly but surely, because it does not happen overnight, slowly but surely, we begin to, to do that.
The other thing is that George says something about the social isolation of folks who do not serve our community. If you watch some of these videos and nonsense, we have people glorifying and romanticizing banging, um, and I don't know why, but here's what I do know, young people watch that mess. Young people internalize that mess. I mean, I went to a party with a young brother, don't ask me why, um, who was about 25, and he had, he was packing. And I'm like, uh, excuse me, but why are you coming to my house with a bang-bang? I mean, I have already extended, uh, my toleration by going to a party with a 25-year-old, you know? But, brother was packing, and he said, everybody was packing. So we need to make sure that our young people understand that packing is not the norm. But the other thing is, when we understand that these videos that show folks with these bang-bangs need to be boycotted by young people who are conscious, you know, that's on y'all, that's not on us.
But, 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 I'm sorry, but, but to the, we, we get real judgmental, and, 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 and I agree with Dr. Malveaux to an extent, my concern is that we think that because you got a deal, you all of a sudden get conscious. And if, just because you now got an MBA contract, or because you got signed by Def Jam, or because you are the, the Heisman Trophy winner, doesn't mean anybody ever mentored you. And, and my concern is, we, we're demonizing young people who have never been mentored instead of saying, how do we get our hands on them?
But Jeff, carrying a weapon should not be the norm.
I'm, I'm, I'm not talking about that, I'm, what I'm talking about is, why are you carrying the weapon and why do you think it's necessary? And at some point, I, I'd rather talk to a young brother before I demonize them, because I need to understand why you packing, what's the reason you feel this way, how do we begin to create an opportunity for you not to feel that way? And, and it's the same thing with a lot of these cats who are in the game. A lot of these cats in the game have not been touched by anybody, they are suffering from the same psychosis of the people that were asking them to mentor.
Right.
And, and nobody's saying, who in the hell is mentoring Wayne besides Baby?
All, all, all right, we, we don't have a lot of time. You good?
I, I, yeah, I mean, I want Susan to get in.
I want, I got them involved to the next person. Uh, it's say your name and what school you attend.
My name is Shaquille Turner, I'm a senior political science major from Denver, Colorado, and I represent Howard University.
Okay, very good. And you want to ask Dr. Malveaux about going out with a 25-year-old, right? Because that's what we all want to talk about now, that's a whole nother. Everybody's thinking, everybody's thinking about that now.
Yeah, I wouldn't leave that, leave that alone.
We're going to...
Please don't ask her that. We actually had a panel discussion today, and I had several questions, but, um, I'm limited to maybe like two.
One, 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 one.
All right. How can we unite our generation under a common struggle despite the diversity of privilege within the diaspora in addition to the individualistic mindset that is becoming more prevalent in our people?
Did we get that? Try that one more time, brother, because I, I didn't get that one. You went, you went there on us, go ahead, slowly.
How can we unite our, our generation under a common struggle despite the diversity of privilege within our, within the diaspora in addition to the individualistic mindset that is becoming more prevalent in our people?
Yeah, I'd like to try that. Anybody? Imtangalisi?
Yeah, as one who spends a tremendous amount of time with students in classroom as well as in organizations on the street, um, there are several things that have to be understood. Number one is this, younger students tend to romanticize the old days of the civil rights movement. They tend to think that all black people were united, that we all agreed, and I think the panelists made it clear that was not the case. They also sense, sense that there was a movement of students and ask the question, what is it that we need to be doing today that's similar to what your generation did? The other thing is, about the individuality question, is helping students to understand that young people, the equilibrium between individualism, or being a person, if you would, and a sense of community, and the value of community that has always been in our culture, that has somehow drifted and gotten lost, perhaps, you know, in the, in the younger generations. And then the thirdly, and perhaps most importantly, is, what are you in school for? What are you trying to do here? We contend academic excellence, cultural competency, and social responsibility. Now, it is up to us, those of us who are your elders, to try to share our experiences and how we came to those three conclusions, and ask you to look at the possibility of engaging yourself in your community in the same way. This is not something, by the way, that happens easily, quickly, or readily. It has to be tested, we have to have dialogue, we have to make sure young people understand the role of age groups and African traditional cultures, et cetera. It's a complicated, complex problem, but you, you can address it by intentionally working on it, as opposed to blaming each other generationally for the differences between us. At least that's something that I have found that pragmatically works with the young people that I deal with.
Okay, next question. We, uh, no, 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 I got it, one per...
Next brother.
One per student, I'm sorry. Thank you for your question. Yes, sir, your name and what school you attend.
Did you see me afterwards?
Okay, my name is Chris from Northern Illinois University. I just want to give a quick shout-out right quick, my frat brother, Mark Lamont Hill, yo baby. But, uh, I just had to do that. So one of the, uh, main words that stuck out, out this conversation with you guys, uh, was brainwash. And I think when it comes to a lot of young African-American men and women, we are brainwashed, uh, you know, for the simple fact that we think that people owe us things, you know, as far as being African-Americans, uh, with other races and everything. So what can we do as young African-American male and females to get out the mindset that, uh, someone owes us something?
I, I think for, well, first of all, it, we want to unpack the language of owed, because we are citizens, right? So, this is ours, right? We built it, right? I mean, African labor built this nation, and it continues to fund this nation and support this nation. The, one of the great lies told by the Republican Party in the last election was that there was this large chunk of people who just wanted stuff, as if we didn't invest in this and build this.
As though they didn't want stuff.
You know, so that, so, so, so there's a difference between responsibility and blame. We shouldn't be out, we should be responsible for ourselves, but it doesn't mean that we're to blame for this mess that we call America. We, we, we got to work through this, right? So, so I, I agree, so we need to, we need to promote a mindset of individuality, hard work, struggle, but also keep that in the context of the collective. I think as far as the brainwashing piece of this, I think that we don't want to, and, and we use Jeff's language, to pathologize black folk as if we are, everybody in America's crazy, right? I mean, this is a function of being in a capital, late capitalist, white supremacist nation. We all are struggling to, to constantly evict white supremacy out of our minds, constantly try to rid ourselves of these, you know, really just wicked values, right? I mean, that, that's part of the challenge of being in this nation, I think we're all doing that. And I think sometimes when we talk about, for example, just to go back to the violence example for a minute, uh, we'll say, you know, this music is jacked up, and it is. And our people are, have this propensity toward violence, and maybe some young brothers are engaged in violence, but that's not indigenous to us, nor is it specific to us. Because you can't have a response to violence largely if we don't look at, for example, US foreign policy. What's US foreign policy's response to struggle? We just launched an imperial counter-revolution in Libya. We just, we, we just, we sent Predator drones killing innocent people in Afghanistan, we just bombed Iraq for the last decade. So when we look at our response, collectively, we look at how police respond to everyday people, violence, we see violence everywhere, and yet we only seem to isolate with the black people. That's not to make an excuse and say, they do it, so we should do it, because if we tried to model ourselves after white practices and culture, we'd have already died, right? So we have to have a different response, but we further destroy ourselves when we link it to us and make it seem like it's us. And finally, on the, on the, on the male-female issue, I think part of what we have to do, and I know your question wasn't exactly this, but part of what we have to do is not just look at sort of how we, as a collective community across gender, respond to these notions of entitlement, to these notions of violence, to these notions of, of depression and so forth, we have to look toward each other and look at how we treat each other across gender. Because many, every problem we've had, and we haven't talked about gender tonight in any substantive way, but when we talk about these organizational problems, we could talk about men asserting leadership over women when women are more qualified, right? We could talk about brothers who stay in the front, PhD holding sisters in the back making coffee. That's been in organizations I've been a part of, from black nationalists to, to post-bourgeois organizations, that's a common feature. When you talk about the issue of violence, we could talk about police violence, we could talk about state violence, but we also have to talk about male-female violence. Because too, too often intimate partner violence, sexual assault, all of this stuff is a form of violence that we don't take seriously as a community, and it permeates of violence that we don't take seriously as a community, and it permeates our everyday being. Think about how young brothers, and now to this last thing I say, think about how young brothers think and talk about their relationship to women. Think about how we talk about even sex. You talking, talking to your frat brothers. Q's are worse than us, though, but you talking to your frat brothers. You talking, you talking, you talking to people in your church, you talking to your colleagues. Yo, bruh, I tapped that. I hit that. I beat that up. Every metaphor we have, even for sexual interactions, is one of violence. In, in the most nuanced and subtle ways, we are prone to a culture of violence that is not exclusive to us, but that we have to be responsible for. So for me, it's about putting a mirror to that, putting a spotlight on the practice, unpacking the language, as the sister said, and then moving forward and doing something different through intervention. And most of all, as Susan said, through mentoring. We have to, and Jeff said it too, we have to put a hand on people, put a body on people and, and, and have a different conversation with them so they know another world is possible.
All right. Uh, no, I, I, I...
Because he talked about entitlement, and this is really important. You have to know your history. Dr. King said, how do you ask somebody to pull themselves up by their bootstraps if they don't have any boots? You have to go back and look at your history. When you talk about entitlement, we are entitled. We built this mess. It belongs to us. The gaps that we see are a function of history. My brother, you have to learn your history. See me afterwards.
All right. Okay, now, um, we've got time, unfortunately, um, for just two more. And so what I'm gonna do...
Can I make a suggestion, brother? Just one suggestion. Can we have, since they've been waiting, could everybody say their question really fast and each of us in 20 seconds or less give a response?
Just do them all at once. Say, say your school and where you're from. Go ahead, sir.
All right, my name is Timothy Wallace, also from Northern Illinois. Most of us are from South Chicago.
Just a question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What can we do, uh, as, like, our community, as, uh, young adults, to help, like, kind of teach about the violence? Like, that's been like the main problem in our society in Chicago, is how can we give a plan? You guys talk about plans with capitalism. What is our plan to, like, help our own community?
Okay, one per school, one per university. Ma'am, yes.
My name is Jawan Darko. I'm a PhD student here at Howard University. And you answered the question that I wanted to ask about women, but my second question is around the diaspora and thinking about African people as a whole across, from Africa to the Caribbean, to the US, to Central and South America. What, how can we talk about that and think about that and move on that?
Okay, thank you. African unity, yes.
Hi, I'm Trina Brooks from Morgan State University. And Mark Lamont Hill, you spoke very eloquently about, um, a question I had, similar to my sister here about sexism, but if, if we have time, if you could just, the rest of the panel speak to that and how we can help young people, um, recognize some of the issues you brought up.
Sexism, yes. And, and lastly...
Hi, my name is Diane, and I'm from Serjana Douglas College. My question to the panel is, in, in Maryland right now, in the federal courts, the HBCUs are on trial. What are y'all gonna do about helping the students to save the HBCUs without being closed? And affirmative action is on their line.
Okay, thank you. And do we, come on, um, not you, are you a student?
Yes, I am.
Quickly, where?
Howard University.
Oh, we, we got, we got one from Howard. We're doing one. Dr. Dan is saying we're doing one. Okay. What can we do as our generation to teach about violence? How do we address unity amongst African people as a whole? Uh, how do we address sexism? And how do we preserve HBCUs? Let's go quickly. Those are the questions I'm for. Susan, I ask for...
Let me just deal with Chicago because it's, it's, um, it's a, it's a major issue, and we're just going into Chicago, into Harlan High, where there are 1,200 students. Something very simple, but I think in heaven. When you come out of incarceration and you have a felony charge, there's very little hope that you're gonna find employment. Yet in our communities, we don't have black-owned cleaner shops, cleaners, tailor shops. We don't have planners. We don't have shoemakers. We don't have, like, the very basic things, laundromats that are owned by us. And I think with our own little investments through our sanctuaries, through our fraternity and sorority organizations, we can begin to teach our young ones, who are brilliant, who may have been incarcerated, just one thing, the Mad Dads, the brothers who patrol the streets in about 50 communities throughout this nation, Friday nights, leave their wives, go into the communities and really go into places that had been very, very troubled. Go up to young ones hanging out and saying, and letting them know, these are brothers. We're here to help you. We love you. Here's my business card. Call me. The brother who founded Mad Dads, Eddie Staten, said to me, I never met one young person, gangbanger, people who've committed, I mean, heinous acts of violence, who said they enjoyed living on the edge. I dropped out of school. I got arrested. I have a felony charge. I can't get a job. I have to take care of myself. So you know what? It's not gonna come from the pulpit, and it's not gonna come from maybe the heads of our organizations. It has to come from those in the sanctuary. It has to come from the congregants. When we stand up and we say, we want our institution, our sorority, our fraternity, our block association to do more than just come together and praise God, as I've said, and I'm gonna say it over and over again, hands that serve are holier than lips that pray. We've got to do the work. That's a plan. Young ones come out of incarceration, I think Father George Clement had begun that, right? One church, one person coming out of incarceration. Bring them into the sanctuary. Treat them well. Help them get Father Frazier, Catholic priest in Chicago. He built a home that would bring people out of incarceration, give them employment. They had to come to church. They had to come to Wednesday night service for two years until they could get the undergirding that they needed to go into the world and be strong. Finally, there is, this is not nuclear physics. There's a problem for every solution we have. And we have to stop looking out here. It's really inside of us as individuals. When we talk about sexism and all the things we're talking about, let us get right. Jeff, you're getting married. And we're talking about it all over the country because it's so rare that you hear a man say, I'm getting married. Wherever you see Jeff, he's pulling out a photograph of his jacket. He wants people to see that he's getting married, and this is my beloved, a beautiful chocolate sister. I'm like loving you, so happy for you. So this is it. You know, wherever you are, drop your bucket, speak kindly, be kind to yourself. Charity begins at home and it spreads abroad. And let's link arms and aims, one with the other. Do something righteous in our blocks, on our blocks, in our churches, in our communities that really gonna help those who are struggling on our watch.
Okay. One, one, one minute, one minute responses. Hold it. I'm coming to sexism first, diaspora, M Tongalisi, quickly, one minute.
I just wanted to say that, uh, the rest of the conference tomorrow is focused on the issue of the diaspora. So I would invite all students who can to please come. There will be a very illustrious, uh, group of practitioners, Pan-African practitioners at the conference, and I really would encourage you to come. I just want to say this with the 10, 10 seconds I have left. The African Union has declared the African diaspora as the sixth region of Africa. That has never happened before in our history. This is an opportunity for young people to get involved in the Africa question, the global Africa diaspora question, in a very different way. So please try to come tomorrow.
Dr. Malvo, sexism.
Well, I actually first wanted to talk about historically black colleges. If you did not go to an HBCU, adopt one. What we know right now is that public education is being cut. Many of our young people will not be able to attend North Carolina, A&amp;T State University, Bowie State University, but you can come to Bennett. You can go to Howard. You can go to the privates. And so we have to make sure that we support these institutions. Now, in the sexism piece, my sisters, we have to draw a line. Why has there never been a woman to lead any of our civil rights organizations? And how long are we gonna put up with that? How long are we gonna be the ones who serve the coffee, who sit behind the scenes, and who do not stand up for our leadership? Part of this is our own acquiescence. Many of us, you know, the black man is supposed to be an endangered species? No, he isn't. I know where he is and find him. The issue is not the endangered species. I mean, you can't love an endangered man. The issue is how we as women begin to stand up and say, this is our share, this is our part. Susan's right, it happens in our personal relationships in terms of deference, but also happens in our organizations, uh, student organizations. Young women would not step up because they want the brother to have an opportunity. But again, we can't fight the fight we have unless every soldier is engaged in the fight. The soldiers are women, the soldiers are men, the soldiers are elders, and they are children. We have to be, be able to deal with that. Now, we live in a patriarchy. We live in a patriarchy that is not about our community, it's about white men and Latino men and every other kind of men who believe they come first. But you know that we, in our community, lead. And so what we can be, get to do is model egalitarian relationships.
And with that, let's give our panelists a round of applause. M Tongalisi, Jeff, Fire Rose, Rem Bulli Wilson, Susan Taylor, George Frazier, Dr. Julian Malvo, and Mark Lamont Hill. Let's welcome back to the podium. Thank you all for allowing me to serve as your moderator tonight. Uh, here is Dr. Ron Daniels.
Up for the panel again, let's give it Mark, for Mark Thompson, an excellent job. Did y'all like that? Did you like that? All right, it was very good. Well, the reason why we need, we have another special part of the program. We asked everybody, just hold still. We only went 90 minutes or so, uh, what did we do, two and a half hours? We set 7:00 to 9:30, and some of y'all got here a little early, and so other people have to struggle hard. Some, that's the other thing we gotta, a little discipline. Discipline, patience. It's a long distance struggle. See, and we used to, you know, like, very quickly, and we gotta go. Hang in there. This was a great conversa, and it's not just gonna be a conversation. Let me just say this. The theme is state of emergency in black America. Susan talked about it. Time to heal black families and communities. That's what we're dealing with at the State of the Black World Conference. On the backside, we are create, we want to create, coming out of the working sessions and even this session, a declaration of intent to heal black families and communities. That is to say, we want to extract from the working sessions, not rhetoric, doable, and Jeff will hit it right on the head, doable. Because see, you know, I, I gotta just say this, in my generation, we were the most revolutionary of all time. And we would, we would wage war by revolution, Jeff. We come out of the community, man, we mean that capitalism is the end, and we are, nobody said how to do it. But we left happy because we had, we had passed, and we fought over those resolutions too. I mean, you gotta remove the word imperialism and put, uh, uh, domestic, I mean, uh, uh, imperial capitalism. Oh, no, no, that's not the word. We gotta talk about monopoly capitalism. We just fought over all them terms, to the point of knocking each other down, and then we left having some documents and we had no capacity. Somebody else, I think, talked about putting together, you may have some, the infrastructure. An agenda is only as good as the infrastructure to implement the agenda. So what we want to do is come away with a declaration of intent to heal black families and communities coming out of the working sessions, with IBW taking no responsibility for implementing it all because we don't have that capacity. We'll be asking which organization, what did you say, Jeff? Which organization will be the pawn or the general, the architect? Who will play what roles? He said it more brilliantly than I do. I've talked for years about specialization and division of labor. Everybody doesn't need to do the same thing. When we put our collective strength together, we can really make it work. So that's our goal on the backside. It will not come out immediately because we don't have the capacity, we gotta digest what's coming out. So it'll be about 30 days before we come out with the document, right? And the document will be a piece of paper. It will be on us to implement it. So I just wanted to put that on the table. And we really, I want to say again, you can register with the conference today, in the hallway, there's a registration table, and therefore be set to come tomorrow. I wanted to acknowledge Shirley gravely, at the School of Divinity of Howard University here, she helped orchestrate us and hurried us together and make sure this, just give her a big round of applause. What a wonderful job of putting us together. And Dr. Thornton, you tell the President Rebo, he missed a hell of a conversation tonight. And we are proud and honored to have been here this, tonight, and, and to do it really in the spirit of our dear beloved brother, Dr. Ronald Walters, or I think would have been proud that we did this kind of session. Now, we want to close. We want to close by bringing to the stage, we want to bring to the stage, the wife and partner, soulmate, of this great freedom fighter and warrior in our struggle. And what a warrior he was. He, he gave his life, gave his life for using his intellect and his organizing talent for the liberation of black people. Unapologetically, didn't mean he was against anybody else, but he knew, he was a race man of the race and for the race. We need a lot of more people like that. We got a lot of people who are of the race, they, they look like me, but they may not be, and in some instances are not for the race. They're just black, and that is not sufficient. We need more than cosmetics, we need more than just the melanin, and we need some substance behind that that is rooted in a determination to be for our people. Ron Walters was the resource person for the Congressional Black Caucus, the National Caucus of Black State Legislators. He just was the resource person. He gave, and he was always on the airwaves, often on Sirius XM and all these other programs. An incredible brother who left us far too soon. But we have his wife and partner here this evening. We want her to come to the stage, if you would. Would you please welcome Patricia Walters to the stage? Let's give it up. And we wanted to offer her, um, an opportunity to say a few words at this time, so it's all yours.
Thank you. I must say, um, that's my favorite picture of my darling Ron, and I call him Ronnie, as most of his old friends know. So I got very emotional because I wasn't expecting to see that picture, but I'm just so very delighted. I wanted to first thank Ron Daniels for dedicating, um, the conference in my husband's memory. So thank you so much, Ron. And I really want to thank Howard University and President Rebo, and Alvin, you can, um, pass his message on to him. I never will forget, um, I was taking care of my sister who'd had triple, quadruple bypass surgery in Florida. And I got this telephone call from President Rebo, and he indicated that he very much wanted to do something in the memory of, uh, Dr. Ron Walters, and that he was thinking of developing a center in honor of my husband. And, um, obviously, I was delighted. And so that was January 2011. So here we are now. You all probably know by now that Howard University has started up the Ronald W. Walters Leadership and Public Policy Center here at Howard University. And I want to thank, um, President Rebo, Alvin Thornton, who was the point man, um, that met with me and my family, uh, to discuss how we were going to proceed with this endeavor. I'm reaching out to everybody that's in the audience right now to, because I know we have academics, we have young students, and so forth and so on. I want you all, in the memory of my husband and his legacy, to reach out to Dr. Elsie Scott, who I'm so happy that we stole from the Congressional Black Caucus Foundation, to lead up, uh, to direct Ron's center. I think he would be delighted that it was an African-American female. He thought so much of Elsie, so, uh, I want you all to reach out to her. We need your brains. We need your thought processes, and I think that's what Ron would want. And finally, I just want to say, Ron and I were a couple for 47 wonderful glorious years, and three years of courting, as we said in my day. So you're talking about 50 years of my life with this wonderful man. I think Ron was one of a kind, and I don't know if we'll ever see his like again. He was three people in one, I always say. He was born to be a professor. That was his, the love. He loved young people. And upon his death, I got calls from all over the world, obviously, from leaders, from, from South Africa, from, from Paris, from Denmark, from wherever they felt Ron's touch. But the most heartfelt, um, outreach that I got were from the young people that had been taught by Ron. And, um, they told me that this man had impacted their life in so many ways, they couldn't even begin to understand how, and, and they appreciated him so much for that. Whether it was a young person that wanted him to serve on his dissertation committee, um, not at University of Maryland, not at Howard, they could have been at Harvard, they could have been at Princeton, but they wanted Ron on their dissertation committee. And he did things like this for students, he loved them, he listened to their personal problems, he listened to their, um, issues that they may have within their family. He lent money to them when they needed the money. And this is what it is all about, giving back. And that was quintessentially Ron Walters. I'd like to share this, um, final story, as you, 'cause you all know his history and his legacy. I don't have to go into the fact that as a young man of 20 years of age, he led the first sit-in movement in our country. And Ron never talked about that. In fact, I think we'd been married 30 years before he even shared this story with me. That's just how low-key this guy was. But he led a, a civil rights sit-in in Wichita, Kansas, in 1958. And he was just this kind of a visionary kind of person, and successfully integrated, um, the Dunkin' Drug Store, which was a chain of Rexall. And they eventually, um, desegregated their chain. So Ron always had this concept of, what can he do for our people? And so that's his legacy. One part of his legacy, uh, being a scholar-activist was his second legacy to us. And he believed in being an activist, and not being in an ivory tower and just teaching, but to get out and work with different organizations. You know the famous ones, Congressional Black Hawkers, Urban League, NAACP, he was the idea man, the thought man. But what you might not know about Ronnie is that he worked with unknown groups. He gave hours upon hours of his time. Uh, he would come into home extraordinarily tired after teaching all day, and then being at a grassroots community organization meeting, and sharing with the people how to better improve the lives of black people. And that was an aspect of his life. And finally, I'd like to share this story. I shared it with Julianne, when I was, um, fortunate enough to receive an honor for Ron in Detroit. But when, we well knew that, at least I knew, very few people knew how ill Ron was towards the end of his lifespan. But he wanted to, um, they had asked him to go to the Mississippi Delta to talk about, um, the plight of our people in the Mississippi Delta, which is like almost one step from slavery. And by that time, the cancer had spread to his lungs, and I truly didn't want him to go, I was being the very protective wife. But, um, he told me, Pat, this is my calling, they want me to go, they wanna use my name, and I have to go down to Mississippi Delta on this week, week-long surjourn. He says, I gotta do it. And so, of course, I said, okay. And so he went. But he didn't go without taking something to the people. And he insisted upon getting a truck, and getting clothing, and getting food, this was just Ron, to take to the people. And in one town, the church backed out and wouldn't let them have their meeting in the church, because the guy that was running the plantation, or whatever it is that they call it, uh, said no. So Ron said, well, we're gonna have this meeting anyway. So Ron stood out in the rain for two hours, preaching to the people, educating the people, and trying to help liberate our people for a better life. That's Ron Walters, that's the love of my life. And my goal now is to continue his legacy in any way that I can, in forms such as this. And so I thank you so much for listening to my personal story. And, um, I do wanna say one thing, 'cause Jeff, um, you might not remember this story, and, but I wanna share it with you, because I found it so Ron. I never will forget when you all were on a panel at Dorothy Height's, one of her, um, panel discussions. And you asked the question of how, this was years ago, how young people could get involved in helping our people to improve their lives and to be spokespersons. And I'm paraphrasing somewhat. And I never will forget Ron's response to you. He said, "You don't ask, you take. You bust through the doors, like I did." And I think he would be so enormously proud to know that you've done that, I listen to you all the time on time, Joyner, and, uh, I just wanted to share that little story, because, um, you don't sit back and wait, you take control as young people. That's what Ronnie had to do when he was young, and that's what you've done in spades. So I just wanted to share that story. Thank you so much.
Okay, we want the panel to sort of stay in place, and Pat, would you sort of join them over there, 'cause we're gonna get some photos there, maybe you can get by, I, well, I won't tell you where you ought to stand, but, uh, we wanna get a photo. Now, let me just say one other thing before we close. I want to again acknowledge Askya Mohammed, whom I acknowledged earlier, the news director at WPFW. Uh, Askya, we had a squappy on the program, but I just wanna let you know, we, we appreciate you, we appreciate, appreciate WPFW. Uh, I also wanna say that, um, the DVDs from this will be available by, uh, by IBW's website. Those of you who'll be in the conference, I understand they'll be ready by Sunday for our closing session. So it will be made available. This was an incredible session, wasn't it?
Yes, it was!
Okay, and right after this, immediately, there are buses outside to take people back to the, uh, to the hotel, but before we close, we're gonna ask our sister from Selma, Alabama, to give us an inspirational close. I don't like to just walk away. I think we oughta walk away together with some Harambe's, or some music, or some freedom songs. So let's, uh, let's do that, all right?
I want y'all to join me with this, I wanna, uh, sing a special song to my sister. The words are very simple, I wanna lift my sister up, she is not heavy. If I don't lift her up, I will fall down. Then I want to lift our brothers up. Thank you so much, Ron and everybody. And then the last is, we wanna lift the movement up, 'cause you're right, my sister, we gotta lift this movement. So the song is very simple, just follow me.
Ooh, oh, I forgot one important thing, and, and this is vitally important for young people. Um, upon Ron's death, I established a scholarship fund here at Howard University, and, um, that's one way that we can help continue Ron's legacy, is to, because, um, I wanted it to be for young persons, um, majoring in political science, because that's what's my husband's feel. And so if you feel it in your heart that you want to give back to the black community, that we reach out to Ron's, um, scholarship fund, so that we can continue to hopefully start with our first, um, scholarship, uh, the next academic year. And I'm sorry that I stowed your thunder a little bit.
I don't have no thunder. Thank you. Ron did promise to come to Selma, and it never happened, but you're here. The songs are simple. I'm gonna sing one verse, it's simple, I want y'all to join in with me. I want to lift my sister up, she is not heavy. I want to lift my sister up, she is not heavy. I want to lift my sister up, she is not heavy. If I don't lift her up, if I don't lift her up. Repeat, if I don't lift her up, if I don't lift her up, I will fall down. Y'all got it, everybody, come on. I want to lift my sister up, she is not heavy. Boom, boom. I want to lift my sister up, she is not heavy. I want to lift my sister, I want to lift my sister up, she is not heavy. If I don't lift her up, if I don't lift her up. If I don't lift her up, if I don't lift her up, I will fall down. Now lift the brothers, I want to lift my brother up, he is not heavy. I want to lift my brother up, he is not heavy. I want to lift my brother, I want to lift my brother up, he is not heavy. If I don't lift him up, if I don't lift him up. If I don't lift him up, if I don't lift him up, I will fall down. Last voice, let's lift this movement. I want to lift the movement up, it is not heavy. I want to lift the movement up, it is not heavy. I want to lift the movement up, it is not heavy. If we don't lift it up, if we don't lift it up. If we don't lift it up, if we don't lift it up, we will fall down. Lift it up!